Well, and do we want to, did you remove one, um, did you remove Harb?
I did.
Okay.
So, um, I'm, I'd like to ask for a motion to pass the consent agenda minus 1B, the meetings, C, second bullet point, 2017-11, and E.
So move.
I can.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes seven to nothing. We will, we'll, we'll take item E, John, when we get to pub, to, uh, community development, okay? Or public works in engineering. All right. Next, we have a community recognition, and I'm going to call Bob Zinkowski up to do the honors.
To join me up here? And also Mr. Austin Hepburn? Rich? We'd like to recognize Mr. Austin Hepburn here. Many of you know we had started a deer calling program in the township here, and I know it's not one of those that are very popular in some realms, but we had a safety issue here in town, and, uh, it was one that became very serious and where we had a lot of animal and vehicular contact. And when we looked at the population, we did a survey, and the numbers were quite high for us, and I'm gonna ask Bill Gallagher to give some statistics on where we started and where we are today. So, Bill?
Thank you, sir. When we started, we started with a report with the United States Department of Agriculture back in late February of 2013. The report documented that the average deer population in this township was 101 deer per square mile, just in Radnor alone, which said at that time there was like 1,487 deer before they even started to have babies, before fawning. So, we hooked up with the USDA, and just first stats numbers, in 2011, we had 144 incidents in the township involving deer. That means car crashes, deer impaled on fences, stuff like that. The, the year that we started officially was 2012, we went down to 138. 2013, we went down to 85, and these are incidents reported to the police department. 2014, 66. 2015, 61. And 2016, half the year I have, was 22. We're looking at this year, at 2017, I was actually talking to the USDA Friday, and he's almost done the, the report from our last year, and we're figuring that we should be between 18 and 22 deer per square mile, as opposed to five years ago with the 101 deer per square mile. So, according to the USDA, we have the best program in Pennsylvania, bar none.
Want to recognize also Sergeant Pinto, who has been very involved with this program here. Uh, he spends a lot of the nighttime that we're out with the, with this program here. Um, I would have to say that it's probably one of the safest programs in the Commonwealth here. Um, I believe, Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know that there are a number of shots taken this year, probably, how many shots are taken?
We, we killed 150 deer this year, and we fired 151 rounds, and that was because one animal, uh, needed to be impacted twice. So, uh, and that was not out of necessity, out of the abundance of caution, to make sure that it was ethically and humanely done as possible. So, and, and, and I apologize, we've probably taken well over a thousand animals, and like the manager said, it's not a pleasant topic, and I know it's unpleasant to a lot of people, but every ounce, every scrap of meat has been donated to causes, um, up over 30,000 pounds of meat has been donated to like women's shelters, homeless shelters, families in need, churches, everywhere. And I can think off the top of my head where we've actually probably fired four rounds over the total number of deer that were actually dispatched in the five years.
So, show, it shows the amount of safety that's taken, uh, into consideration when this occurs, and that there are many opportunities where shots could be taken, and they're not, because the public safety is the top priority of this. So, it shows how detailed this program is, the partnership that we have with the USDA, and when you look back at this program, and Austin, I'm gonna have you step forward here, here's a gentleman, one of our residents, who helped us start this program, who took the time and the effort, um, to come to us and work alongside of us, and it shows how our residents work with us, who have a lot of these ideas and suggestions to us. I want to thank Austin for his time, his efforts, and his oversight and advice to us and counseling to us. So, Austin, thank you so much for all your hard work and efforts, and this plaque we'd like to present to you is hereby bestowed upon Austin Hepburn in recognition of your dedicated service to Radnor Township community. Over the last several years, Mr. Hepburn has been an example of the great community partners to Radnor community. Be it known that the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners sincerely appreciate and thanks you for your lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the blessed place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line.
Thank you, Bob.
Austin, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I, I'd just like to say that I'm a bow hunter, I'm a volunteer, I do it because I love nature, and it's how I grew up. Um, I have a very spiritual connection to the deer and harvesting them. My family, we eat them, we have deer marcella, deer lasagna, uh...
Deer chili.
Deer chili, deer jerky. We eat deer all year long, but, um, I want to thank Bob for this award, I want to thank Radnor Township for the opportunity to be involved. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob.
Next on our agenda, we have public participation, and this is when we invite members of the public to come give comment. We have a very full agenda tonight, so I'm going to reiterate our guidelines that we ask that people keep their comments to five minutes or less, and if you get close to the five-minute mark, I will gently remind you that you are approaching it. Um, and we, if you're here for a certain item on the agenda, it's, uh, we encourage you to wait until that item comes on and give your comment then, unless for some reason you have to leave. Um, so with that, I welcome you up. Hello?
Hello, Elaine.
Hello, Marty.
Commissioner, I'd like to introduce, uh, the President of the Radnor Township Memorial Day Parade Committee, Mr. Neil Fulton. He'll be talking about a few items about the upcoming parade. Mr. Neil Fulton.
Hi, Board. Uh, my name is Neil Fulton. Uh, I'm here representing the Radnor Memorial Day Parade Committee. I'd like to announce our 2017 Parade Marshal and Speaker. Uh, our Parade Marshal this year will be Mr. Donald Wood. Uh, Mr. Wood has served our community and country tirelessly for many decades. He served as Naval Reserve for over 10 years, um, as a community educator in Radnor Township for 34 to 35 years, and as a volunteer fireman for over 60 years. This year's speaker will be the President of the Valley Forge Military Academy and College, Colonel John Church, USMC. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Neil. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Cynthia Curly. I live on Plant Avenue in Ward 1. Um, I'm here to speak about storm water management project issues. Um, I know the North Wayne Field is on the agenda, but it looks as though it may not be up for discussion, so I wanted to make sure a few comments were made. Too self-spoken. How's that? I have written all of you, so please forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but I've spoken with many of my neighbors, and they've encouraged me to come forward and speak, and as much as I would prefer not to be here, here I am, and I think they deserve a voice. There are projects that are going to help, and there are projects that are going to help some while hurting others. I'm a realist, and I feel both types of projects should be implemented, but to me, the timing of such becomes very, very important. Projects that have indicated increased flooding for some, I feel, should only be implemented after other projects that would offset such. This strikes me as more than reasonable. I know you hear a lot from those on Poplar Avenue, and they have terrible flooding, but we on Plant, Woodland, and Willow also have equally horrible flooding. If you look at the modeling maps, you'll actually see we have higher flood levels than they do. Our street has many cars being lost, homes surrounded by water on all sides, and streets inaccessible to emergency vehicles. And while the homes on Pennsylvania, which is in between Poplar and, and Pen, and Plant, has been spared to date, the creek water has gotten very close to flooding their homes as well. At the relatively small storm last summer, one of our home, uh, one home on Poplar had creek water against it. At the same time, we had 16 homes on our street that had water against it. Um, I have dear friends on Poplar Avenue, I would love nothing more to the help, than to help them, but not at the price of asking other dear friends to take on more flooding. That is simply unconscionable to me, and also strikes me as liable. The North Wayne Basin cleanout has been modeled, and CH2M Hill has presented the results, and it indicated some decreased flooding for North Wayne Avenue and Poplar, but it showed an increase in flooding for Willow. And considering Plant's flooding, I fear we too would be vulnerable. Some want to just say the modeling results are wrong, and others seem to use a margin of error as a rationale to do the cleanout, but a margin of error goes both ways, um, so it could be even worse. I understand Dan was supposed to be here tonight to present some enhanced modeling, but was unable, but hopefully will be here, I guess, at the next meeting. I hope you agree that the basin cleanout should only occur after another project that has been deemed to offset such. That project actually is the one that doesn't concern me as much, though. The one that really concerns me is the pipe realignment project at Poplar Culvert. Let me be clear, in my opinion, I believe it's a good project, um, but I feel we need to be very, very careful with this one. We know three things. One, the water that currently backs up on Poplar Avenue is not going to miraculously disappear. Water has to go somewhere. Two, water goes downstream. Three, the realigned waterfall pipe will convey water at a higher flow rate. Oh, pages sticking together, sorry about that. Why does this concern me so much? Because the next pinch point along the stream occurs only 300 feet down from this spot. Um, it is where the flooding on Plant Avenue begins, which then floods 22 homes up and down stream at that point. I cannot imagine what the flooding will be like if the pipe realignment should occur without another project to offset it. Dan has stated the pipe realignment project cannot be modeled, and this too concerns me. We need some kind of quantifiable data, and if we not, and if not, I feel we need to err in the extreme.
Cynthia, if I could just let you know, you're coming up on five minutes.
Thank you, I'm almost done. Again, this approach of timing of projects strikes me as more than reasonable, and again, it's about timing, it's not about the projects. I've heard some say, oh, what's a few inches? Well, first of all, I'm certain they would not be saying that if the water was coming towards their houses, and secondly, as little as one inch will design damage of waters. One inch made the difference in my home, one inch means the difference between waistline vent pipes, 22 washers and dryers, 22 hot water tanks, mainline gas line, HVAC systems, main electrical service boxes, et cetera, et cetera. Well, some have said everyone can't be made happy. Let me make it clear, a zero net improvement on a street that floods first is not making anyone happy, it is the absolute bare minimum that should be considered, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Good evening, Ken Taylor from Willow Avenue. On the same topic, I didn't know since there is unlikely to be an actual motion or action tonight whether you would permit public comment on the North Wayne Field agenda item. Uh, I'll speak briefly, but I'll also be more than glad to listen to what others have to say and, and recommend, uh, and reserve most of my comment until after I can get their input, because even as late as this morning, there seems to be some, uh, some melding of the minds, uh, to a certain degree around some of these topics. Um, I ha, I do have at least one individual from Willow Avenue who's joined me, Jim Vasallo. Um, he is 30-plus years on the street, he lives on the dog leg that takes an abundant amount of water when the stream overtops. He is at the dog leg, at the head of Willow Avenue. Uh, the first sign of overflow is water coming through his yard and actually pouring down Willow Avenue itself. Uh, that overtops before the creek actually, uh, overtops. Uh, his yard is immediately eroded, uh, and we have had whitecaps down Willow Avenue, uh, from the water that runs through his property and then on to Willow Avenue. Uh, I also have a relative newbie, James Sevus, he is willing to speak to you tonight. Uh, he's at 238 Willow Avenue. He's a, a young man who bought a property a short time ago, despite the trepidations that we suffer, especially on the south side of that street, uh, and he's here to, uh, join Mr. Vasallo and myself, and through an email exchange with our Commissioner earlier today, Mike Feely, uh, of 244 Willow Avenue. The thing we all have in common is, we are entreating this board to model every prospective project to determine whether there are any unintended consequences to downstream properties. I jeopardized Brett's today, it's still good law. I know, uh, Commissioner Curly asked the solicitor to, uh, in, 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 uh, executive session to give advice on the Brett's. It's still good law, and, um, there was some, uh, concern where can, can we, can we go ahead and allow a detriment, uh, resulting on Willow Avenue for a project, a clean, the cleanout project, as long as it's, it's within the, uh, you know, the, the error limit, or it's just small? Well, I'm gonna read you a little passage from Brett's, and this is still good law, as of today, and that is, "A plaintiff, this would be a citizen, who brings an action against you for approving a project that does them harm, rather than, as Cynthia indicated, is a net zero, so they have no cause of action because they haven't been injured." Or, better yet, you schedule these projects so that you're actually improving these people's lot in life, and you're improving their situation before you take a little bit back to help the needy people on Poplar and North Wayne for that project. Has to do with the timing, as Cynthia indicated. And the language of Brett says this, "A plaintiff need only show that a landowner collected and/or concentrated surface water from its natural channel through an artificial medium, and the water was discharged onto the plaintiff's property in an increased volume or force, however slight." That means the seminal case on this does not allow you to hide behind a de minimis defense. So, uh, you're gonna take whatever advice your solicitor gives you on this, uh, but this, this melts into the point that I've been making, I guess the last five times I've been for you, and that is, all the more need, just like we did on Banbury, just like we did on Willow, to model the dickens out of these things so that you guys can take all precautions against this kind of liability down the road. The only other alternative offered under law, Pennsylvania law, is for you to go to each of the, in, the impacted property owners and negotiate for money, probably, some kind of a, uh, off-site easement for stormwater.
Ken, I just want to interrupt you, let you know you're coming up on your five minutes.
I would rather see, as I said before, money spent on projects, not spent on legal defense, and I'm gonna suggest on Willow Avenue that if you time, and it may very well be what's, what's gonna be coming forth as, as part of the discussion night, if you time projects to improve things on Willow Avenue before you take a little bit back, there's no one that's gonna complain, and I'll be the first property owner to sign an easement to the township for $0, as long as you commit within that easement agreement to, to fund those projects, complete them simultaneously with or prior to the, the, the cleanout project, I'll give you my easement for $0, or if you give me a dollar, I'll donate it back to the stormwater fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment?
Hi, my name's Merrily Johnstone, and I live on Morris Circle, um, and I am standing before you to, uh, support the idea of the additional sidewalk, short sidewalk stretch between Morris Circle and Liberty Lane, um, to attest that many people use that pathway now, that's a sloping, precarious, muddy, slippery pathway, um, to access Liberty Lane and then the Radnor Trail Park and entrance, um, as their primary way to access the Radnor Trail, as well as to access downtown Wayne, um, because the alternate pedestrian route from our area to access downtown Wayne is along Conestoga Road, which, while there is a sidewalk, you have to cross Conestoga to get there, which is a very scary crossing, 'cause there's no light, um, there's a, a crosswalk, um, with sometimes a sign in the middle that tells cars they have to stop, but often times cars don't stop, and sometimes that sign isn't there. So, we do not let our children use that route. Um, this other route that would involve the new sidewalk is the route we allow them to use for safety reasons, because the other route is not, we do not, as parents, deem safe. In addition to children walking to and from school or accessing, um, the trail, people walking dogs use this, um, as well, um, so it's a very heavily used, unsafe path currently. Um, so I am advocating for a bona fide sidewalk, um, as a safety measure, um, for all those people using that access, um, so that they don't fall into the traffic and get run over, which is our constant concern as parents when we send our kids off on that path. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Hello, Baron. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. Be very brief, uh, at last meeting, Dan and Michelle Skolnick were up here talking about the blood drive in memory of Michelle's mother, Kelly Jackslerod. Uh, it will be in this room in less than 12 hours, so the clock is ticking. Uh, if you need more information on it, it's chabludrive.org. In addition to saving lives, which it definitely does, there's plenty of good food and prizes, and the Skolnicks will be making donations to the Radnor Library and to the Fire Company. There are appointments available still in the afternoon, and appointments are strongly recommended. I know, I think Jim and Elaine have already signed up, if I'm not mistaken, um, so, but appointments are strongly recommended, but there's still some available, so go to chabludrive.org if you're interested in coming here. Thank you.
Thanks, Baron. Anyone else like to make public comment?
Good evening, Dan Sherry, Wayne. Um, first, just a quick comment. What I do actually is not, as a career, speak in front of Radnor Boards, it actually is litigate automotive defect claims, and so when I heard tonight, uh, that an award would be given out to somebody, uh, who has actually helped, in my opinion, save likely numerous lives, it meant a lot to me. Um, to hear that, uh, Mr. Hepburn has been involved, um, with the, with the deer call in Radnor Township, I can only say that there are multiple automobile manufacturers that actually specifically test for how their vehicles will perform, uh, in evading these types of animals, putting aside the collisions. Um, so the fact that this deer call has been, um, so successful, I think is wonderful, and it really, um, puts people's volunteer efforts in this township in context. Um, we have wonderful volunteer firefighters, um, we also have people that speak in front of boards a lot, that doesn't tend to save very many lives, and then we also have people like Mr. Hepburn, so, um, I would just like to use a little bit of my time at the podium to, um, thank Mr. Hepburn for what he did. Um, the other thing, uh, just a quick clarification, since I see on the agenda tonight, uh, basin and stormwater, we've been through this before, is there some million-dollar line item associated with this version tonight, or have we not done that at least this time? Okay, just making sure about that. Cleanout project, good. Okay, uh, for the majority of my comments tonight, it's going to involve what happened at the Ethics Board last week, when it convened and it accepted a complaint that was lodged against Commissioner Elaine Paul Schaefer. And for convenience, I have a handout, which I'll pass up, which goes over some noteworthy quotes. Now, last week, the Ethics Board in a televised meeting, um, accepted the complaint against Elaine Paul Schaefer. There wasn't too many people at the meeting, and that is probably due to the fact that up until the day before the meeting, the public had no idea what the meeting was about. The agenda was completely and utterly without description. Once that got changed, once rather, I learned it through submitting a request that this board, um, provides some clarity, and learned that it was Elaine Paul Schaefer, I went to the meeting. And when I was at the meeting, I noted that while, um, the Township Manager was present, and the Ethics Board was present, and Elaine Paul Schaefer's attorney was present, there was no attorney there representing the Ethics Board. And that's actually required by Radnor's Ethics Code. John Rice was in the room, but he recused from the matter. I still don't know what he was doing there, but he was there, but there was no attorney up there advising the Ethics Board. And so I asked that at the meeting, why don't you have the attorney present? And I got blinked out a lot by Martin Heldring and the other members up there on the dais. And after my comments, and I have this quote, Elaine Paul Schaefer's attorney gave a speech, and in conclusion he says, "So respectfully to suggest that there is some mandate in the code that you cannot operate without the Township Manager or the Solicitor, with all due respect to the previous speaker, is erroneous." Thank you for hearing my point of view. Now, as soon as Elaine Paul Schaefer's counsel said that, I recalled that John Rice has stated the exact opposite. I provided this board with John Rice's quote. It's back on April 24th, 2014. It's on camera. It's what John Rice said, "The Ethics Board requires both me and the Township Manager to participate and provide support." Let me read that again, 'cause I messed that up. "The Ethics Code requires both me and the Township Manager to participate and provide support." Unambiguous. Now, after Commissioner Schaefer's attorney said that you don't need the solicitor, I expected Martin Heldring to immediately correct him.
Mr. Sherry, I'd just like to let you know you're coming up against your five-minute limit.
Just, just interrupt, please, thank you. Here's what Mr. Heldring said. "Thank you, any other public comment? Um, I, I, I have to say that I agree with your assessment of the code. And just for transparency and point of clarification, uh, this board did serve, did have the services of an attorney in its previous three cases. Um, the Board of Commissioners took a view that it was too expensive and wanted to choose another attorney. Uh, they have been unable to do so for the past six months. Uh, we have requested an attorney twice. At this point, the committee decided, weighed the options of continuing to wait ad infinitum or dealing with the complaint, and we voted unanimously to deal with the complaint, and that's what we're doing, um, and we feel comfortable doing so without an attorney." Completely at odds with what this township's legal position is. They cannot accept the complaint, they cannot convene unless they have an attorney. And this morning, I sent to you what somebody else on this board who currently serves on the Ethics Board said. That's Phil R. Phil R. said specifically, "They can't convene till they have special counsel," right? You said that back on October 10th, 2016, Commissioner R. So what are you doing, accepting this complaint without an attorney? There's now only one attorney...
Mr. Sherry, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up your comments, it's been six minutes now.
I'll be quick. There's only now one attorney associated with this ethics proceeding, and that's Elaine Paul Schaefer's attorney. The Ethics Board has no ability whatsoever to disregard this township's stated legal position. They're an advisory board. This board can tell John Rice to go jump in a lake. Advisory boards, they have to follow this township's legal position, and instead, they cast it aside, put on a cape and boots, and thought that they would just go out and somehow protect, I don't know what, Elaine Paul Schaefer's reputation? Who knows? But that's not their, their role. They cannot accept a complaint until they have been properly formed per the code. Please, take that seriously and direct the Ethics Board to comply with that which John Rice has said is a legal requirement. Not the ancieri, not Elaine Paul Schaefer's counsel, the Township Solicitor, because until you comply with that, you have a rogue board. Fix it. Mitigate it. And Commissioner R., you should've known better. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to give public comment tonight? Uh, I believe Commissioner R. has, oh, oops. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm James Sevus, I live on Wayne Avenue, uh, I'm sorry, Willow Avenue, and I'm here to talk about the North Wayne Basin cleanup and proposed project. Appreciate being here. Um, as Ken mentioned earlier, I've only lived in Wayne for a year and a half, but my biggest fear living in Wayne is actually the flood conditions that we have, and knowing that every single time we have a large storm, that we're merely fractions of an inch away from having flooding in our basements. Uh, it's a big challenge, and one of the things I noticed by looking at the documents that were posted in previous... were posted in previous presentations that were prepared by the township is that there's a problem-location overlap right at the top of Willow Avenue. And I think that really concerns me, that there's multiple sources of water, multiple problems coming together that are compounding this issue. And I do believe, like what other people have presented and said, that the proposed project, as well as the cleanup, are good projects, but they will cause negative effect on the street that we live, Willow Avenue, as well as some of the other streets, it appears. So what I ask is that time and effort is put towards addressing the issue, this problem-location overlap that affects us, prior to moving forward with the cleanup or the proposed project on hand. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in and giving comment. Is there anybody else who would like to give comment? Okay, I believe, oh, we have one more.
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Cameron Azarano, and I live on 243 Willow Avenue. I am here because we dearly love our street, we dearly love our township, and we've been having some conversations recently. We do live on the north side of the street, so over the years, we have had a better opportunity at controlling the water, though I will tell you that I have stood in 15 inches of water in my basement. We also have witnessed our neighbors who have had their basements completely full to the top of the basement. My husband is somebody who is very good with water and has spent numerous, numerous hours helping our neighbors by basically pumping out their entire basement. I also have witnessed the white caps that Ken referred to coming down our street. I think what I want to just say is, I don't know this for sure, because I've not had the personal conversations with some of the people who may have inferred that, don't worry about Willow Avenue, we are just a group of renters. If that is the case, I would like to refute that. My husband and I bought our home at 243 Willow Avenue in the spring of 1999. We have raised our three children, who two are teenagers in high school, and one is leaving Wayne Elementary School this year. So there are very, very many children and families that are directly impacted by the water that we get on Willow Avenue. There are a couple of rental properties, but quite frankly, more of them are owned. And we are committed to improving our street, and we ask that you make this an issue not based on people, but based on the water. And where is it coming from? Where does it start? Maybe looking even above the basin? Are we really fully exploring all of the areas that the water may be coming from and affecting us before you make any decision? Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment tonight? Okay, Commissioner R. has a comment that he would like to share.
Thank you Elaine. I did want to take an opportunity to respond to Mr. Sherry's questions, and I appreciate him bringing them to our forefront, and I think the answers are fairly straightforward. First of all, before I do that, I also want to add my congratulations and thanks to Mr. Austin Hepburn for his volunteerism, and we've had recent examples of many others who have come up here showing their volunteerism, and we appreciate that. We've had a special dinner for people on boards and commissions, and the people on this board are also volunteers as well. So we thank all those people who participate in that way for helping our township be great. As far as the questions that have been raised, as I mentioned, I think the answers are straightforward, and these are some of the things that we looked at a long time ago. In fact, back to last year. So these are not new thoughts. And when you look at this, rather than look at people's comments, I think you first have to look back to what is the code itself, and take our marching orders from the code. And so from there, the Radnor Code, Chapter 39-7, About the Ethics Board, Paragraph B, clearly states that the membership of the Ethics Board shall be four Radnor citizens, members, and the President of the Board of Commissioners. In this case, since Elaine could not attend, that job falls to me. The Township Manager, as Vice President, "The Township Manager and Township Solicitor shall provide necessary staff assistance as requested by the Board, but shall have no vote." So it is not mandated that they are there. It is mandated that if it is asked for, that they provide it. It had been asked for all last year, given the fact that it was a 90-day window in which they were to take up the case, and there were no solicitors approved by the Board. Seeing none, and this has moved into the seventh month of what should have been solved in three months, there is none. And so under that regard, there is no absolute certainty that a solicitor must be there. Now, we did ask the Township Manager to provide staff assistance, and he was there at that meeting. Now, it also says, by the way, under the same chapter, Section E, and I'll use this for reference later, "The Ethics Board may make recommendations with respect to amendments to this Code of Ethics." In addition to that, you will note that it's part of the Board of Ethics Rules and Regulations under Item B, Preliminary Inquiry, Number One, it says, "A preliminary inquiry will be terminated or opened, terminated or opened, as a full investigation within 90 days of the initiation thereof. A preliminary inquiry is considered initiated at the time that the complaint is received." The complaint was received in September 25th, 2016. That 90-day period expired December 25th, 2016. We're now in March, in May. So that has gone well past. In fact, it's more than double the time that was required. And this is for the protection of the person that has been complained against. Nothing should be happening dragged out for that long. And so, with that in mind, having the charge to have the membership of the Board be clearly defined, having the staff assistants being clearly regulated and defined, and also having the fact that this should be cleared up at the start of the investigation, if not cleared up in 90 days, these things cannot all happen. And so I think rightly so. There was no objection to any of the members of the Board, of the Ethics Board, to go ahead and handle this. We've had people who have been through this a couple of times in the last few years, they're familiar with the procedures. The Township Manager would be there to give assistance that we required to handle our investigation. And in that regard, we were fulfilling the requirements of the code. Now, to the extent that people have made comments that he's quoting, Mr. Sherry's quoting, I think we have a case here where we have quotes taken, I won't say out of context, I'll just say that they're not in context. Mr. Rice's comments that he quotes to back in 2014, where he says that these items, namely the matter that the Solicitor must be there for a Board, is absolutely required. He was in response to a question that his presence was made. For example, he was to recuse himself from that particular incident that they were going to discuss. However, this Board had not convened in many years. He was certainly within his rights and duties to be there as they constitute themselves for the first time in a number of years. And so when he said he was required to be there, it was because he was eligible to be there, because they were talking about the procedures, not the case, and he was asked to be there. So in that case, yes, he was required to be there, for no other reason than that. In this case, having seen no special counsel being performed, there's no one to ask for it, so they move forward. Secondly, on my comments that were made at the beginning of this case, back in September, I think it was, when we first had our first vote for a Solicitor, my comments were in reference to the fact that we had a tie vote, or actually a decline vote, where we could not pass on the Solicitor that was presented. So my question to John Rice was, did we have a time limit? And finding out how much time we had to have this investigation start, to which case the answer was 90 days. So after that, I said, well, then we needed to go ahead and have some action in 90 days. Having not done that, we're in a different spot completely from seven months later. So in that regard, it's my opinion, it is all those on the Ethics Board, that we are fulfilling the purposes and the rights of the code. By the way, I should say that the rules and regulations that I quoted from have been approved from some time by the same Board of Commissioners, and that under that authority, even though that was not in the code itself, the rules and regulations for handling the investigation were approved by the Board, and have not been changed from that time. So the Board has had ample time to change any rules or regulations they feel are not consistent with what they want. Having not done so, we're following the code as we read it. We're following the code as it is written, and under that authority and that reason, we're moving forward.
Thank you Phil.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment in response to that.
I have some comments.
And so, first of all, Phil's, Commissioner R. is absolutely incorrect. The interpretation has always been counsel is required for the investigatory function of the Ethics Board. It has not been refuted, the Solicitor clearly made that point. And the reason that we have not moved forward with the investigation was because of the intransigence of the Democrat majority on this Board. We have proffered multiple attorneys from many different sources, including our manager, and all have been rejected. Presumably, the Democrat side of this Board wants to control the attorney and will not have someone who will be unbiased. Finally, the only reason that there's a 90-day requirement is so that it gives a proper amount of time for them to conduct the investigation. It is not, this is not a criminal proceeding. There is no right to a speedy trial. This is a proceeding that is underway and is delayed until such time as a counsel can be appointed. This is an improper act by the Ethics Board in moving forward without counsel, and the interpretation as espoused by Phil R. is absolutely incorrect, and not in keeping with the law that's currently enacted and construed, and that applies to this Board and to the Board of Ethics. Finally, the Board of Ethics has no ability to vote, which they presumably, or which they had reportedly done, they voted in private to move forward without an attorney. Again, that's an improper act. Under the sunshine law, they must do that in public. So there's multiple infractions by the Ethics Board at this point, and Attorney Sherry has the correct interpretation of how they should move forward.
Don, you wanted to make a comment?
I have a few comments too. So first, I'm not criticizing the Ethics Board. We put them in place, I know some of them, I played a large role in putting them in place. When they said, "What do I do?", I said, "You use your judgment and do what you think is right." So they used their judgment, and they did what they thought was right. My issue is with the Board of Commissioners that put them in a position to take action without a Solicitor. So let's look at, you know, sort of Phil's position. I have to say, I respectfully disagree with Phil's position. We had decided that this is so important that we should pay somebody upwards of $30,000, it's my recollection of what we paid last time. So it must have been important to us. Last time, we paid something on the order of $450 an hour. It must have been important to us, or we would not have decided to assume those legal bills. Members here voted that way, so some members here voted for counsel at some point. So that meant it must have been important to everyone who is sitting at the dais. Whether Phil is, you know, whether they are required or not required, I don't know. You know, I see the merit of both arguments. The reality is, when I don't know, I want to turn to a Solicitor. And we don't have a Solicitor in place to whom I can turn, and that's the fundamental disconnect, the fundamental problem. So there's certainly uncertainty, and we've created a situation where the Board can proceed, or the Ethics Board can proceed, without resolving that uncertainty. A little background on why we have uncertainty, we tied 3 to 3. I don't think anybody expected us to go this long, but from my perspective, we tied 3 to 3, and then we went beyond, we went outside of Radnor, and that's when it fell apart. I feel that the other side has just not willing to compromise. I feel like it's our guy or nothing, and that, to me, is a problem. So, lastly, I don't think we're doing a service to Elaine. I think if you wanted to make this uncomfortable for Elaine, don't hire a Solicitor, make the process incomplete, make everything that happens have a footnote on it so that nobody gets resolution. If you want this to be fair, then make it happen in accordance with the rules so that we can have resolution, and to do that, we need to have legal representation at the Ethics Board.
All right, thank you for your comments. We're going to move on in the-
I want to point out that when you have a 3 to 3 vote, I think the point can be made that both sides are unwilling to compromise. So to try to put it on the Democrats is absurd. Also, I'd like to point out that Commissioner Booker cites statements made by our Solicitor as being important, true, valid, whatever you like to call it, but meanwhile, the Solicitor advised Commissioner Booker that he should not participate in these actions, and that, in fact, I suspect will end up leading to ethics charges against Commissioner Booker when we're finished.
That's absolutely incorrect, that's not the case.
Okay, let's get on with the business of this township, okay?
I just have a small comment. Looking back at the process in last fall, we had four or five sessions in private where we had in front of us a dossier of qualified people to serve as Solicitor of the Ethics Board. And the fact of the matter is, we could not agree. There was a lack of trust on our side, and I think a lack of trust on the Republican side. So I think, just the point I want to make here is that all six of us bear some responsibility for failing to agree on anybody, and perhaps, I think maybe at this point, we should just go back to the meeting room and try again and come up with a name.
Okay, I think that's an excellent suggestion, excellent idea.
I think I do need 30 seconds. I just want to clear the record, because it was made and I did not address it. Commissioner Booker raised it, and Mr. Sherry did put it in his note here. And I just want to clarify, at our Executive Committee meeting, prior to our meeting that we had publicly, we did not have a vote to go ahead and proceed. It was not a vote. What we had, because the vote is improper, as it was said, you cannot have a public vote in private. I know Mr. Heldring said so. I did not hear it at the time, I did hear-
Voted unanimously.
Mr. Sherry, please do not scream out from the audience. That's very inappropriate.
That's right.
And public comment is over, Mr. Sherry.
No, 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 excuse me. The statement from Mr. Heldring-
No, I'm not inviting you up for public comment at this point.
-is that there was a unanimous vote- I know, I know he said that, I understand that.
Mr. Sherry, I'm going to ask you to sit down now.
Because you're correcting Mr. Heldring. It's correct. Okay, so Mr. Heldring, the chairman, made a misrepresentation.
Let's just-
Yeah, better stop.
Okay, I'm going to have us move on to the business of this township, and the next item on our agenda is the finance update with our Finance Director, Bill White. And we are looking forward to hearing about the fiscal health of our township in this first quarter.
Thank you very much. Ian, if you could turn on the screens, I'll try to step through this. I have to admit, I'm a little excited that the room's full. Usually when I give these presentations, it's to about five or six folks, so it's nice to have a captive audience, so. I will not take advantage and make this last too long. This is, as we do on a quarterly basis, this is an update on how we're doing so far in 2017. This was an agenda item for the second meeting in April, and due to other constraints and other priorities, and now it's running away on me, it was moved to tonight's agenda. So what I did is I went ahead and updated it to include April as well, since we have the information. So this is actually January through April. What I'll do is I'll step through the general fund, how the results year-to-date, as well as how they-
as how they may look for the rest of the year, and then touch on the sanitary sewer, stormwater, and then our pension asset performance to date. Just at a 30,000-foot view, the revenues so far this year have been relatively strong. The real estate tax, if you've, the Commissioners have heard me say this, it's the one revenue item that is, in Radnor, very predictable. And 2017 is no exception. To date, the Act 511 revenue is ahead of estimates, and that's mostly due to BPT, the Business Privilege Tax, as well as the real estate transfer. And I've got several qualifications in this presentation on the Business Privilege Tax being that the due date isn't until May 15th. So it's a little premature to, to get a real understanding of how that may look. It's like trying to predict the income tax at the end of March, when the filing is April 15th. So the other, the other area that is done really strong is the permitting revenue. As, we knew that was going to occur based on the development happening at Villanova. And then in terms of departmental revenues, there's mixed results, but on the aggregate, they're on target. Now, on the expense side, they're on target on the aggregate. We've got some contracted services that are trending over budget. And then, as we've discussed, at least in some of the, like with, with the organization restructure, the payroll and related are under budget so far. And we anticipate those to stay that way as a result of the new org chart. Taking a look at the, the numbers themselves, the, the general fund total revenues, $7 short of $34.3 million. At this point, through April, we would expect to have collected roughly half of that. And as you could see in the table, we've collected $1.9 million in excess of that target. And again, that, that ties back to the, the large permitting revenue that was roughly $1 million that we realized in January, as well as the Business Privilege Tax being a little bit ahead of where it's been in prior years. And there was one large Business Privilege Tax audit settlement that was agreed upon in December. As part of the agreement, half was due in December, the other half in January. So we realized the other half in January. On the expense side, the full-year budget's a shade under $35 million. At this point in the year, we would expect to collect, or have spent 25%, and we are basically right on top of that with a slight negative variance. That's the result, the, on the good side, payroll and related is under budget, and then we've contracted engineering has been over. And that is the result of having to catch up on some past due or some lagging bills from 2016. The other quick note is, you would think through April, we'd be closer to 33% target, but due to seasonality, 25% is the actual target. We have some larger bills that are due in September. So when you take a look at the, the net revenues, for the full year, we, our budget shows that we should have a positive net revenue of $365,000. To date, being that most of our larger revenues are collected earlier in the year, we would expect to be at roughly nine. We're at 10.9, which makes sense, because expenses are on target, and the revenues are roughly 1.9 million ahead of where we, where we would target them. So the graph is indicating that the, that the cash value of the general fund is, is above the budget line through April. Taking a little bit closer look at the real estate taxes, the total estimate for the year is 12 and a half million. We are through the discount period, or the discount payment period, the final, the face amount isn't due until the end of this month, but the overwhelming majority of the taxpayers take advantage of the 2% discount. So we would expect to have collected 92%, and we're at 93. And again, this speaks to the predictability of this, of the real estate taxes in Radnor. By the end of this month, the, the estimate will be near 1, you know, 100%. With the only thing left to collect throughout the year are any interims and other delinquent payments for this year. On the Act 511 side, Act 511 includes all the business-related taxes, as well as the real estate transfer tax. And the full-year budget is 14.2. We would expect to be at about a quarter of that, and we're at 30%. Again, it's the Business Privilege Tax and the Real Estate Transfer Tax are the two revenue, specific revenue types that are slightly ahead of estimates. And again, I'll qualify that the Business Privilege Tax, it could just mean that filers are, are paying a little earlier this year than in prior years. We won't know for certain until we get past the May 15th due date. But if, through at least April, the trend is positive. The all-other revenue includes permitting, departmental revenue, interests, and any other kind of miscellaneous revenues that the township receives, or the general fund receives. And that estimate for the full year is 7.6 million. The target would be roughly 31%. We're at 45, and the variance is due entirely to the, the $1 million, roughly $1 million one-time payment that we realized in January. And as I noted at the, the beginning, the rest of the revenues in this category are on the aggregate, right on top of their targets, with some doing better and some below the Switching gears to the expense side, our first expense category includes our general government category, which is made up of the administration, finance, the elected treasurer, and our IT departments. Each of those departments, we have a target percent based on, again, the historical spending of, of each, and how, where they, we think they would be at this point in the year. The two variances to touch on with the, the administration is due to higher-than-expected legal expenses to date, which is causing that negative variance. And then on the IT side, we have a, a small timing difference, which is about 2,000 of And the, the rest of that is, if you, if the Commissioners will recall, in January, our finance server, the one that we are in the process of replacing crashed on us. So we had an emergency call in to our new IT partner and asked for that, their help. And so there was an unplanned expense in getting the server back up and running. Looking at our protection to persons and property category, which includes community development, police, the township's contributions to our fire, our volunteer fire companies, as well as our emergency operations center. Working backwards, so far in 2017, we have not needed our EOC, so there are no costs associated with that. I should knock on wood. Fire contributions are relatively predictable. There is a timing difference resulting in that $24,000 variance. And then contracted services and payroll are generating the positive variance in community development, which, most of it's payroll, so we anticipate that carrying through the rest of 2017. And obviously, when you take a look at the, the spending in that category, police is by far the largest, and most, the community development department is covered through permitting revenues. On the public works side, we have five divisions, including our building and grounds, the solid waste and recycling, our engineering, highway, and mechanics divisions. There, there's some seasonality and some things that Public Works has to deal with that's a little bit outside of their control, which generates variances. The building and grounds has incurred some higher-than-anticipated costs as a result of some injured employees. So backfilling with overtime and, and other folks has caused some overtime variance there. Solid waste and recycling, we had a, a major expense on the, one of our trucks that caused that $29,000 variance. I touched on the variance with the engineering department at the top. The, that, so I'll, I'll speak to that for a second, as long as the presentation doesn't keep moving on me. The $215,000 was paying catch-up invoices that were incurred in 2016 that were either under review or were tied to escrow projects, or projects that were being funded through escrow. We caught up in January. I don't have an exact number tonight, it's something we're working on, but almost all of that $215,000, it, our expenses incurred as part of development projects where the developer or the property owner has put up escrow. So it's our anticipation that we'll recover most of that $215,000 variance in that regard. Parks and Recreation, which includes our recreation and community programming, our park maintenance, our shade tree cost center, as well as our rec programs in Sopizio Gym. Park maintenance is under budget as a result of payroll. Variance is there's vacant positions there that's generating those savings. Shade Trees is trending a little bit over budget. We had one large project over at Hartford Park this year. And this, this particular cost center is a little bit hard to predict in terms of, and it just depends on what kind of dangerous trees are in need of being taken down, which causes those expenses to fluctuate year over year. The Sopizio Gym variance is negative at this point, just, there was several building repair and maintenance and small improvement items in terms of lighting, cleaning, facilities within the, the building itself, some improvements done there that caused that variance. The last category includes our contributions to the library and contributions to other community organizations, as well as our insurance and retiree benefit cost center. The variance with the library is the result of some mold, mold issues at the building that were discovered during the construction or improvements currently taking place. $15,206 of that, $16,206 will be recovered through insurance. It's, there's, the expense was put out, we're expecting the insurance reimbursement any day. The community organization, the variance there were, is a result of higher revenue-sharing contributions to the Wayne Presbyterian Church. We have the revenue-sharing agreement with them on the, the parking lot behind their, their church, and so there's higher revenue sharing there that resulted in that variance. The retiree and insurance, retiree benefit variance is a result of some insurance claims that came in that were paid a little bit ahead of schedule. That's, that's a variance that'll be worked out by the end of the year. And the other was a budgeting error. That's, the only line item in the other category is our payments to the various paying agents on our outstanding bonds, which total about $4,000 per year. When we put the budget together, we had mistakenly left that at zero. So we'll have a $4,000 variance there by the end of the year. So that is the general fund, both in terms of revenue and expenses. Taking a look at our, our sewer rent fund, these revenues are currently being collected. We would expect to be at a roughly 80% of the $4.8 million estimate. We are actually at 3.6%. Those were due at the end of April. There's still payments being processed, some that inevitably come in after the April 30th due date. So those are still being processed. So we'll, we'll find out, we'll have a better idea of how we truly ended up once May is complete. We've had variances in this fund in the past. If, if, it, it appears that the variance here is the result of lower water usage. If that is indeed the case, then we would anticipate having a similar positive variance on our contributions to RHM, because they're based on the same, the, the water flow consumption. And then with regard to our stormwater fund, the, as, the, the billing for this occurs in January, so at this point, we've collected all of the, the face value of the bills that went out. The variance that exists, which is only $26,000, $27,000, is outstanding accounts receivable bills that, where folks haven't paid yet. But this is another revenue item that, since its inception, perform, or, is realized pretty much in line with what is expected of it, and it's a little over a million per year. And then finally, at, this was, this particular item was added, I forget if it was the third or fourth quarter last year, but it, what we, the idea of including this in the quarterly updates is to keep the Board apprised on how the, the pension fund investment returns are, are actually coming in, given its impact on our annual budgets, when they either come in short or exceed the 7.5% assumed value. Through the first three months, oh, I should also qualify, as of today, I don't have the April 30th return data, or at least I didn't, a half hour before I came into this meeting. So the next report we'll have all the way through June. But for the, the first quarter of this year, we're at 4.26%. And that is what it is. It's hard to glean any kind of future results based on what happened already. But at, through the, the first quarter point, it's at 4.26%.
Bill, at your earliest opportunity, would you kindly send me this slide individually? Thank you.
Yeah, that's actually an excellent transition. As I wrap up, what we'll do, what we do with these presentations is we, we load them up on the website, so all the slides will be available on the website. I can email them to the Commissioners as well, if they'll, the whole presentation, or if you just want the one slide, Commissioner, I can do that. Very good.
Thank you, Bill. As always, very, very thorough, and good for us to get a gauge of how we're doing as, how we were planning. I did have one detailed question. The real estate transfer tax, what revenue category was, is that included in the real estate?
The real estate transfer taxes is, is part of our Act 511 group.
Act 511 group. And how, in general, I mean, that's not broken out in your chart, but how is that performing?
It's, it is, it is, it was the real estate transfer tax and the Business Privilege Tax revenues that were ahead of the estimates.
Okay.
To date. Bear with me, this is going to ask me four times to update, but I could give you a more precise number. It was to the tune of about $200,000 ahead of estimates through the end of April.
Through April.
Yeah, just in the general fund. So the other part of that is that a similar positive variance would exist in the Park and Open Space Fund, which is obviously used to help retire those bonds as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have one question. Oh, Luca.
All right, I overstated it a little. The variance is $120,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill, one question on the BPT.
Yes.
Last year, we had a meeting with small business owners about the BPT, and you basically invited them to, you know, have an open dialogue with you. Has that continued? Have they continued to meet with you? Is that, is that working well for everybody?
Well, we haven't had group meetings. I know that Bob Tate, who is our Assistant Finance Director and our HR Manager, he oversees the administration of that program. He has met, well, the, the one meeting we had with CarFAC in February of last year, he's, he's met with those business owners individually. The other thing that came out of that was a, a more user-friendly, as, as user-friendly as it can be, type of summary of the tax that was distributed, which has seemed to generate a little bit more foot traffic. There's anywhere from six to 10 business owners that come in every week and sit down with Bob, and that's part of what we offer. That's, that's what he does. And so I would encourage anyone who has questions or needs help to go see Bob and make sure that, make sure that they get it done right.
Thanks, Bill.
Bill, I had one question. The real estate tax, I'm going to, my understanding is, for all intents and purposes, we get 100%, meaning not in every, in one year, we might not collect 100% of what's due for that year, but we're collecting back taxes in that year. And it's, it's a process that, for all intents and purposes, we get 100% of real estate, because everybody has to pay at some point.
Fairly accurate. Fairly accurate. Okay, so do we have something similar with the sewer fee, or do we have delinquents? Some municipalities have sizable delinquents on the percentage of 20% that never pay. Do we have that, and what is our delinquency rate? We do have a delinquency list. It is nowhere on the magnitude of 20%. I can get that exact percentage and get back to, to you and the rest of the Board. It's, if, if I had to. It's, if I had to ballpark it, I'd put it around 5%.
Okay.
In collection, we do put liens on those properties. So it is in, not as quickly as real estate, but it is collected in time.
So we have a program, it isn't like you choose not to pay and we just, okay, no problem. You choose not to pay, eventually you will hear from us. It might be 15 years from now when you sell your home, but eventually you will hear from us.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Thank you.
And we have, in this, I forget which year it was now, a few years ago, offered an amnesty where penalties and interest were forgiven if homeowners, to allow homeowners an opportunity within a window to catch up. That's always an option. We exercised it a few years ago because we felt like the list was getting a little large. And it actually was very successful. And then Amy Lacy, who's here tonight in Jennifer's absence, administered that and did a terrific job.
Thank you again.
My pleasure.
For your diligent work on this. And for everyone who wants to see more of it, there's, it'll be on the website, and all of our financial reporting is easily accessible on the website. Next, we are going to move to the personnel.
Excuse me, before we move on, we had discussed legal bills and not approving the Clark Hill at this time, but we didn't miss that when we were approving disbursements.
Right, right, because we approved all the disbursements.
Peter, can we, so some of us had concern, some of us had some questions. And what we, we had meant to do was pull them out so that Bob could get us some information about that.
We just make a motion now?
Yeah, make a motion, revise the earlier motion and pull out those bills and to approve the others. Yeah, that's perfectly appropriate.
Want to do that, John?
Yeah, so move that we remove the Clark Hill billing at this time so we can get further detail.
Second.
And Commissioner comment?
Just so the public knows, Clark Hill is our labor council, the law firm. And we have looked at their bill for March and have questions.
Is there any other Commissioner comment or public comment on that? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes seven to nothing. Okay, now we will move on to the Personnel and Administration Committee, and Commissioner R. is the Chair of that subcommittee.
Great, thank you. First item up is item number B, which is the ordinance, 2017-06, an adoption, approving a three-year lease for the Philadelphia area Independent School Business Officers Association, otherwise known as PESBOA, for a portion of the Radnor Township municipal building consisting of approximately 2,730 square feet. Bob, can I turn it over to you to kind of give us a little bit more information? We talked about it last, last meeting, but perhaps there's some more that you want to fill in.
Sure, Commissioner. Approximately seven years ago, I know when I started, the board had asked that we had utilized about one-third of this building with staff and the commissioners, actually with a volunteer group, CB FAC, which was a group of residents that came together to look at the finances of the township, the operations. And one of the recommendations were is to utilize more space in the township here. And what we did is gone out and we had, were able to find a non-for-profit organization, PESBOA, which is the Philadelphia Independent School Business Officers Association. And they were, they liked the space, they liked the nice building here. So they had leased 1,500 square feet of the building there on the second floor here. And they had spoken to us, we had spoken to them, and they are looking to expand their space now to 2,730 square feet, which they'll be taking the administrative offices where my office is at, or human resources. So we are going to squeeze down in our space, which is good, and expand their space. So the rent in the past that they had paid us was 42,000. Now the rent will go up to 76,500. So they'll be utilizing more space within this building, which is good. It meets the goals of the Board of Commissioners here to utilize more space in this building. And they have been a great tenant. They basically, pretty much stay in their own space there. There's not much public traffic that comes in and out of the building, so allows residents to continue to come in and out of this building here. Public access is great for this building. When they do have opportunities, when they have bigger meetings, when they bring in their, the different groups and organizations that are members of their organization, they rent the space here, this room. So it's been a good partnership here to have them in the township building here, and we're glad that they are agreeing for another three years to be here for expanded space. So I'd ask the board to consider approving this agreement, this lease.
I will go ahead and move for the adoption of the ordinance, 2017-06.
Second.
Is there any other Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I, Peter, I, Peter Nelson, I didn't know John Rice was going to be absent this evening. So today I sent him an email, and I inquired about one little item, and that was that the existing lease that we have with this organization runs until September. And the current draft of the, of the lease says it will, the lease for the new space will start in June. I didn't see, I didn't see any provision that addresses what happens to the old lease from June to September. And the answer probably is that it just merges into the new lease, but I think that ought to be addressed in the document, don't you?
It's not addressed. It could be, but I don't think it's essential. Both parties are obviously in agreement. It'd be a problem if, if there was a third party involved somewhere, but there isn't. So there's no problem. I agree with you, it's not in there. It could have been in there. I don't see it as, as any sort of critical issue. The parties are agreeing that the old lease is being terminated upon this one being executed and starting on June 1st. And the group is just going to move, move across, you know, across the floor.
And this is probably covered in our Home Rule Charter. This is an ordinance that we're taking action. It's not, it's not a resolution.
It's because it's a three-year lease, it has to be an ordinance. That is under your charter. And in fact, I think that the ordinance itself, if you look at the, when the opening paragraphs actually discuss, discusses this fact. So since it's three years, it has to be an ordinance. All the previous leases with this group were two years, and so none of them were ordinances.
Okay, follow you. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comment? Any public comment on this issue? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the adoption of this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes seven to nothing.
Great, thank you. Next item is going to be item number C, Resolution 2017-70. And it's self-explanatory, so let me read it in its entirety. It's just a small portion. It says, "Resolution of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, supporting legislation to reform the redistricting of state legislative and congressional districts." And it says, "Whereas legislative and congressional redistricting has often resulted in the gerrymandering of districts to favor one political party or another, whereas gerrymandering of such districts has worked at times to the detriment of our representative democracy by impeding action on critical issues of importance for our people. And whereas the creation of a truly independent citizens' redistricting commission devoid of political partisanship will help to ensure a fair and accurate legislative and congressional redistricting process that respects political subdivisions. And whereas recent legislation has been introduced in the current legislative session to amend the Pennsylvania Constitution to reform the decennial legislative and congressional redistricting process with the intent of using fairness and sound methodology in a nonpartisan fashion. Now therefore be resolved, hereby resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township does support legislative efforts to secure expeditious action to make a constitutional amendment that would assign the decennial task of both legislative and congressional redistricting to an independent citizens' redistricting commission. And be it further resolved that we call upon all elected officials in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, who represent the citizens of the township of Radnor, to publicly announce their support of and commitment to work towards passage of such legislative efforts. And that a copy of this resolution be delivered to each one of them, named in the attached Exhibit A. So resolved to stay in Radnor Township. And Exhibit A is in your packet and includes the Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, and United States Representatives, Pennsylvania Senators, Pennsylvania Representatives, Delaware County Council Members, and Delaware County Councilmen's." So I will move this, I support this, I will move it for several reasons, not only for the reasons inside there, but also because some research has shown that redistricting, or that the, such kind of non-redistricting, but the way it's done now rewards extreme positions versus a collaborative solutions. That the way it's done now leads to gerrymandering in the sense that leads to gridlock in legislative areas and shuts out some new voices, because it means that these districts are created to support legislators that are in office right now and does not allow a fair districting for happening. And lastly, it means that accountable government is nearly impossible, as many legislators run unopposed in their legislative districts because they're made safe districts. So I'll support this, and I'll lead, I'll put the motion out that we accept.
I will go ahead and second this. First of all, I want to say thank you to the people of Fair Districts PA, of whom I think there are many here in the audience. If you don't mind, would you raise your hands if you're here with Fair Districts? So for the people at home, there are about at least 50 people here from this group supporting this resolution. I am very enthusiastically supporting and will vote for this resolution. In my opinion, the partisan drawing of lines is one of the most destructive and damaging factors in our modern democracy. It allows politicians to pick their voters, as opposed to voters picking their politicians. And it creates a government that is less responsive to residents and government that doesn't tend to work through compromise and consensus. It tends to work through digging of the heels in to satisfy the extremes. So I'm very enthusiastic. I really hope this, this movement gets legs and moves forward. I know that it has been, I've been watching it in the news, and many townships have, have passed a resolution like this, and I'm happy to be in that group tonight, hopefully, and fully support a nonpartisan approach to drawing of districts and creating a commission that is independent and nonpartisan, and that will do it in a fair way. We in Radnor tried this when we had to do our own little redistricting in 20, recently, a few years ago, three years ago. And we'd started the process here by hiring a mathematician, and she, and a cartologist, and she drew our first set of maps without knowing anything about our township. And that's what we started from. So I am committed to this, and I, I hope that my colleagues are as well. And I thank everyone for, for coming up. After we are done giving our comments, we will have some opportunity for public comment if, if anyone wants to come up and support or oppose. Is there any other Commissioner that like, would like to make comment?
I'll reserve my comments, but I, there's one typographical error in the resolution. That is, the word legalization should be changed to legislation. Luke, you showed it to me. I forget which paragraph it's in.
Which paragraph?
It's the fourth paragraph, Rich. Thank you.
The last one.
As close.
Well, that is a typo. I'm not sure that we need an amendment for that.
It's not, it's not.
It's just a typo. Or is there any other comment from any other Commissioner at this point?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to vote against it. Here are my concerns. So let's, not, not in a particular order. So first, this is a constitutional amendment, and what I have is a paragraph and a few emails. So I don't know that this board has the, has had, has done diligence to decide that Pennsylvania should amend its constitution. So first concern. Second concern, I'm always troubled by this idea of we're going to create a nonpartisan group, because my concern is what, what happens is the partisans simply create the group, and then it becomes a smokescreen for partisan behavior. So in the absence of knowing that that can't happen, I have some troubles here. Elaine, you mentioned us doing that. I thought our attempt at this was not good. I thought we created a smokescreen. Like we, you mentioned that we, we hired a mathematician. At the end, she was a mapmaker, making the maps that we told her to make. So to me, I saw that as a smokescreen. I saw that as we, we created a process, and the process wasn't true. And then we use that to say, you know, how great we did. So to me, that was problematic. Another concern is that gerrymandering isn't a party issue, it's an incumbency issue. It's not Rs. and Ds. against each other. It's powerful Rs. and powerful Ds. getting together to protect each other, powerful insiders getting together to protect each other. It's an insider-outsider issue, not a partisan issue. So that if we attack it with, if our claim is this is a partisan problem, let's make it nonpartisan, I don't think we're solving the problem. If we want to, if we want to attack the issue, we got to get at the inside-outside aspect of it. So on balance, I don't see enough for us to, to make that, this decision going forward, and I'm going to vote against it.
Anybody else on the board?
I would also add, in our instance, when we had, we hired someone to redraw the legislative lines, the first draft came back that had each, had three of the commissioners were now outside of their representative area. So it would have disenfranchised the voters had that gone through. In addition, the legislative draft that I've seen indicates that when we do have a, an impasse or the proposed nonpartisan body drawing up the lines has a conflict, it would go to an academic or a person who would be appointed. I have concerns with that in that that person would not be accountable to the voters. So I agree with Don in his points and also have these other concerns.
Anyone else?
Well, I think it's a, a good idea. It's been demonstrated to work in a few other states. And then, as you remember, and Don was one of the person that voiced concerns about the last redistricting we did, and the Legawin voters did a review. And in fact, they presented us with some ideas for ways we could change the Radnor process. And I would like us to start moving on that, because 10 years is going to come around sooner than you think. So I'd like to have staff start to mull over what was presented to us, and then we can weigh in on any changes.
Okay, anyone else on this board?
I'll say I, I share Rich's concern about the, if it doesn't make it through the 11-person committee, it going to the special master, who I don't know who he or she is accountable to. However, my residents, the emails I got from my email blast were overwhelmingly supportive of this. I think it's a good thing in spirit, so I don't know if the current bill's going to get through, from what I understand, but I think the spirit of it is good. So.
Anyone else on this board? Is there anybody from staff that would like to comment? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Ian, we're going to try and get the computer to work. This is not one that I've used before, so you're going to have to bear with me. Windows. Hold on. Close. Okay, so my name is Michael Kearney. I live on Walnut Avenue in the first ward. I've been a Rad, my wife, Chris, and I have been Radnor residents for almost 40 years. I'm here, I'm a volunteer also for Fair Districts PA, which is a nonpartisan statewide coalition of organizations and individuals who believe that fair elections are the foundation of our democracy. And I favor passage of this resolution, and that's why. All right? This is, this is a map of the 7th Congressional District. This is Congressman Meem's district. This district was drawn by the General Assembly and laid out and passed in 2011. And I expect many of you may have seen this map before, right? It's been reproduced in both local and national media as a prime example of the excesses of partisan gerrymandering, and it is fast becoming a gerrymandering cliche. In a recent Philadelphia Business Journal article, editor Craig I. described his reaction when he went out and Googled Pennsylvania congressional districts. And when he saw this map for the first time, this is how he described it. Quote, "When you get to the images, you either bust out laughing or retreat into stunned silence. You're very unlikely to say, 'Well, this makes perfect sense.'" Right? It doesn't make perfect sense. I'll give a couple of examples, or... silence. You're very unlikely to say, 'Well, this makes perfect sense.'" It doesn't make perfect sense. I'll give a couple of examples, or there are many. If one of you was the congressman from the 7th Congressional District and wanted naturally to place your office in the center of your district, in the center of the congressional district, it would be in the 6th Congressional District. That's the little yellow dot there over there in Chester Camp. If you wanted to stay within the boundaries and walk from the westernmost part of the 7th Congressional, which is sort of in near intercourse in Lancaster County, walk all the way through up to the upper right, which is Maple Glen, which is in Montgomery County. So this district comprises five separate counties within southeastern Pennsylvania. If you wanted to make that walk, at one point up there near sort of the mouth of Goofy, this is often called Goofy and Donald, in sort of the colloquial parlance, you'd get to a point where you, where over, say, maybe the course of a quarter of a mile, you'd have to cross 12 railroad tracks, put on your waders, and go through a swamp, and then walk on water across the Schuylkill River. This doesn't, this doesn't make sense. And, you know, examples like this provide some comic relief perhaps, because we all like looking at Rorschach diagrams and figuring them out, but it's not so funny when you realize this is our congressional district. It's not somebody else's. We live here, all right? And the commissioners in the township and our neighbors in all these five counties have to suffer the problems that occur when votes aren't counted, when votes don't count. So why do our legislative leaders do this? And the answer, as far as I'm concerned, is that they do it because they can, all right? And there's two reasons they can. One is a perfectly logical one, namely that their, that's their constitutional responsibility. The legislature has a responsibility for laying out the districts. But the other thing they can do, which they couldn't do 10 or 20 years ago, was to take a mapping system and be able to finely craft a legal congressional district that looks like this. And it's only going to get, I don't want to say worse, but their capabilities are ever increasing. In a recent paper from the University of Illinois, researchers were able to generate and pick the best of 100,000 maps in one hour, right? We're up against people with machines that can gerrymander things even worse than they are now. And these maps would probably be illegal, but as I said to my little brother on his 21st birthday, just because it's legal doesn't mean it's good for you. So that's why 12 state senators, 87 representatives, have introduced legislation this term to amend the state constitution to transfer this redistricting authority from the legislature to an independent citizens' commission, which will have the authority to, and duty, right, to draw both state and congressional legislative district boundaries fairly, impartially, and transparently. It's this principle, right, of the independent commission that we're asking the commissioners to support tonight. So finally, I'm hoping I'm within my five minutes. You may ask yourself, so why should I devote time to redistricting reform when there are so many other things that need doing? I've got to choose my battles. Well, that's true, but for me, it comes down to this. Our legislative districts are the terrain over which political battles are fought. Statewide, our legislative races lack meaningful competition. This last cycle, the candidates in about half of the races for the General Assembly and three of our 18 congressional races ran unopposed in the general election. We need more competition, all right? Gerrymandering, as Commissioner R pointed out, shields incumbency and feeds complacency and worse. The result is legislative stalemate. Pennsylvania and the Commonwealth cannot prosper under these conditions. We can do much better. So I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for coming out. Hello, Katrina, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I too want to, yes, I will. I'm just not sure about the technology here. I'm Katrina Ogilby, and I have been a resident of South Wayne on Orchard Way for the last 31 years. Thank you very much.
There you go.
So I also am here tonight to speak in favor of the Fair District resolution in front of you. And what we're asking the board to do tonight is really a matter of conscience. Politics has always played a role in the legislative districts, but advancements in our technology now are a game changer. They're requiring new rules in order to protect our democratic process. What was once a quaint backroom party boss deal-making is now a finely tuned and targeted computer process that undermines representative democracy. So you can see the map here of, this is our 7th district over time. And there's always been, as you can see, some, you know, jockeying of the lines, but obviously the last drawing of the lines is beyond imagination, really. You know, our 7th district is really one of the most gerrymandered in the country. And it's really due to this precision in which reams of data can now be entered into, programmed into computers and create pure districts that marginalize opposition. So this, in my mind, is a travesty. You know, we're sending elected officials to Harrisburg that aren't responsive and don't need to be responsive to the general electorate. Precision gerrymandering, in my opinion, is really at the heart of our government's So tonight, you know, I understand Mr. Curley and Mr. Booker's objections, but you look at this, and I'm not sure we can do a lot worse. So tonight, I'm really asking both Democrats and Republicans on this board to please, as a matter of conscience and good government, to support this petition in favor of creating a fair and nonpartisan process for drafting districts in Pennsylvania that represent the people. Thank you.
My name is Dan Murphy, a former resident of Radnor Township. My speech is simple. Self-regulation, whether it's a legislative body, doctors, lawyers, et cetera, never works.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
My name's Mindy Aldridge. I had no intention of getting up, and I'm not going to say much, but I had to when I kind of heard the comments from the commissioners. I don't think this is a partisan issue. I think that this is a people issue. I'm actually a lifelong Republican. I'm in full support of this because I do think that it squashes diversity of voice. What concerns me is I think, I don't really know my politics on this commission because I've never come before, started to sound pretty partisan up there. In my mind, I think this is a little bit like the fox overseeing the hen house. I think it's got to come outside of the legislature. It's got to be independent, and this is my issue. So I don't really care if it's viewed as Democrat, Republican, Independent, Green Party, whatever, I think it has to happen. So I hope we find a way to do it, and I hope you guys find a way to do it.
Thank you.
I have no visuals, but I ask you to use your imagination.
Can you introduce yourself?
Paul Matheson. I live on Windermere Avenue, across from Radnor Middle School, and I'm also part of the Fair Districts PA team. I'm here, like others, to ask the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners to pass Resolution 2017-70, supporting state legislation to reform the process for redistricting Pennsylvania's state legislative and congressional districts. Six years ago, an oddball from Radnor, whose body I inhabit, ran one lap around the perimeter of Pennsylvania, over the Appalachian mountain chain twice, pushing a large boulder, a fully-loaded jogging stroller. The ostensible purpose of the run was to raise awareness about political redistricting happening at the time and to inspire reform in this once-a-decade process. Radnor Township personnel provided guidance about the run to the oddball, including in the form of puzzled looks from Police Superintendent Collarulo. Better to seek permission now than to beg for forgiveness later, the oddball reasoned. The oddball also visited the Wayne War Memorial to seek permission from its apparent overseer, who looked strangely like the gentleman with Navy on his back earlier in the evening, to start, to seek his permission to start and finish the run at the memorial. The oddball explained the run to the gentleman overseer and that he, the oddball, had great reverence for the memorial. "My dad," the oddball said, "is a veteran and a former POW, and I'm named after his brother who didn't make it back." The overseer not only said yes to the run, but he also provided a letter of introduction for the oddball to present two American Legion and VFW posts he would encounter along the way. The oddball's dad eventually went on to become an ordained minister. If there's one thing that the oddball has learned from his dad, it's that peace is even more difficult than war. Redistricting reform is a heavy lift. In Pennsylvania, it requires amending the state constitution, but doing so would provide for the relative peace so desperately needed to make progress on urgent matters logjammed for so long in Harrisburg and in Washington. Truth is, I'm not asking you to vote for this resolution because it's easy. I'm asking you to do it, at least some of you, because it's hard. Please support this resolution and do something historic for yourselves, our community, and our Commonwealth. One final thing, I was carrying with me, or this oddball was carrying with him, a baton, crimson relay baton, that the track coach at Radnor High School provided, which implicitly suggests that the Radnor School Board has already supported this resolution. They may just be finding out about this right now, this evening, on TV. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Ruth Mooney. I'm a Radnor Township resident. I live at 500 East Lancaster Avenue, and I am a member of Fair Districts Pennsylvania. I have become politically active since our last election, and I have been to Representative Meehan's office on many occasions, and one of the, one of the reasons that he gives for not holding town hall meetings is that, that they have seen buses coming up to his town hall meetings, now this is before the election, coming up to his town hall meetings, and, you know, there are busloads of people getting off. Well, if you look at his district, of course, there are, I'm glad there are people coming in buses. I wouldn't want individual people driving from Lancaster to come here. And he also says that, you know, it's difficult to represent such a diverse population. Well, we can fix that for you. We can, we can fix that for you. And I also wanted to say that, that there are very specific criteria lined out, outlined for people who would be selected for this commission. There's an application process, there is, it's possible, you know, there's a selection process, there's a pool. It will be 11 members, four of whom are from the, from the political party with the largest registration, four of whom from the, from the political party with the next largest registration, and then the others are from people who have either no political party or are in another political party, like the Green Party. The, there are, let me see, six, at least six sets of qualifications, one of which has four subparts to it. But some of the things that are included is that the person must have voted for the last three statewide general elections immediately preceding the date of appointment. He has not held, nor has an immediate family member held an elected public office in federal or state level, has not, he, the person, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be saying he, because that's not what it says in here, has not served, nor has a spouse who has served as a paid staff member or paid consultant to Congress, the General Assembly, or staff appointed by the governor in the five years, five years, immediately preceding the date of appointment. Has not registered, nor has a spouse who has registered as a federal or state lobbyist in the Commonwealth in the five years preceding the date of the appointment to the commission. Has not been nominated, nor has a spouse who has been nominated as a candidate for elective office by a political party or political body, or, it goes on and on and on. You can't get much less apolitical than this. And then after you've served, you can't run for office for three years. So it really does make very specific limits on your, on your political affiliation. So in terms of it being bipartisan, it certainly is laid out to be bipartisan, and it certainly is laid out to have people who are not in elected offices or related to people who are elected offices, or any of those kinds of things. And one of the things, there is a special master. One of the things that happens if this commission does not resolve this, they don't get paid. Now, there's a little bit of incentive there. I would hope that that would not have to be invoked, but I would hope that, you know, knowing at the end of the day, you don't get your paycheck if you don't do your job. Hey, now, there's a real novel approach, isn't it? So I encourage you to pass this resolution, to stand with other members of Pennsylvania and say, enough already. Regardless of which party you're from, it's, it's really important that every vote count and that we not get counted out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to add their voice? All right, Jim, did you want to?
Yes, I'd like to. I'm going to vote for this. Mike Kearney is my constituent, well, he's all of our constituents, came to me in January, and we had coffee at the Radnor, at the Wayne's train station, and he opened my eyes to the situation. I loved his description of the 7th Congressional District. You didn't say this, Mike, but it's goofy kicking Donald Duck. I don't know if that was your original or where it came from, but. I'd like to borrow from Fair Districts Pennsylvania, the organization from Harrisburg, a short statement of what this is all about, because I know we've heard, we've heard different voices explain it, but I'd like to try to summarize it. When politicians oversee the process of drawing legislative lines, lines are drawn to keep voters together or to separate them into different districts to give some groups a voice and to make sure others aren't heard. Lines are drawn to create safe districts for incumbents, to punish politicians who don't play by party rules, and to ensure that the party in power maintains control for the next 10 years. And this is. And this is Democrats and Republicans that we can say are behind this. The way the lines are drawn determines who controls the governing body, shapes legislative priorities and behavior, and defines which bills get passed into law and which never receive a vote. Most democratic nations use non-legislative commissions to determine legislative districts. Election analysts agree that the best solution to gerrymander districts is an independent commission with strict guidelines for public input and transparency, and clear standards for the final outcome. In Pennsylvania, this would require a constitutional amendment initiated and approved by two successive legislative sessions, then approved by voters in a public referendum. So it's not going to be an easy road. I don't know why the Constitution writers in 1971, when we last did our Constitution, made it so difficult to amend it. First passage in the 2017-2018 session in Harrisburg would still allow time to have a citizens' commission in place for the 2020 redistricting cycle. Legislators from both parties, and both State Senate and House, are working together on bills to address this. And it says, "Ask your legislators to sign on as a cosponsor. Specific bill numbers will be available soon." Well, I think those bill numbers are actually available, and you can find those. It's info@fairdistrictsp.com. So I'd like to thank Mike and all the people that have come out tonight. Katrina, we're old friends, that have spoken for this and who have raised their hands in support of it, and I hope our Board of Commissioners will come around and approve this. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the vote to support this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? So that passes five to two. I want to say thank you to Fair Districts and all the supporters who came out tonight. This -- This resolution will be sent to all of the elected officials that are listed in Exhibit A as a statement from this board, and let's hope that it takes some action. Thank you. All right. Next, we move on to Public Safety Committee report. I am the chair of that committee. Item D has been removed from the agenda. Item E is a presentation by our Radnor Police regarding the neighborhood home and personal safety tips, and I'm going to ask Superintendent Calorulo to take this.
Madam President, this is something Commissioner Rich Booker requested. We were at a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago, and people were concerned about target hardening and safety awareness, and Commissioner Booker asked the township manager if my officers would give a similar abbreviated seminar. And I'd like to give credit to Township Manager, since Mr. Zinkowski's been here, he wanted us to have a proactive, global approach to things that happen nationally, and as you know, because you've attended many of them, as did the other commissioners, we've had many public safety seminars dealing with bullying, active shooters, school shootings, internet safety. We've even had self-defense tactics for women. So I'm glad Commissioner Booker asked for this, and now I'm going to present Deputy Superintendent Flanagan, Block, and Lieutenant Sean Dietrich to give a quick presentation.
Thank you.
I'd just like to also add, we had a meeting with one of my constituents in Second Ward, Ms. Sarah Armstrong put together a group of neighbors, and appreciate her efforts and thank her for doing that, and it came out of some concerns in the neighborhood, so we wanted to have the police come and not just talk to our neighborhood, but talk to everyone, talk about these safety seminar items, as well as what our police do to protect our constituents and their property every day. So thanks very much, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to start off with going over crime data. We want to compare the same categories we talked about with your constituents, so we expanded to the entire township. Then we'll give you a very condensed update, and then we have some tips that we just want to reiterate with the public. First, we'll go over the motor vehicle thefts, which are up a little bit this year over last year. We had six in one attempt this year. We had one last year. Burglaries are down this year. We've had four plus two attempts, and last year was a lot higher, at 10 in three attempts. And thefts from motor vehicles, 17 this year so far with three attempts, and last year it was a lot higher, 31 with five attempts. Just to give you an update on the overview, obviously, the motor vehicle thefts have our attention. We are currently investigating the one we talked about up there. We're working with the Upper Marion Vehicle Theft Task Force. We're also working with the Philadelphia Police Department. We have several avenues we're pursuing, and we're pursuing those very actively. If you have any further questions, Deputy Superintendent Flanagan is here, and he can address any particulars you might have. To go into some specific things you can do, the residents, to prevent car thefts, first of all, we want to discuss why vehicles are stolen. Joyriding. Lower Marion had one the end of last year where the guy literally stole the car, drove it about four blocks, dropped the car off, keys were left in the car. We'll get into that, but a big part of it is joyriding. They steal to ship parts, especially the high-end cars, and these really do apply to Radnor Township. Parts to parts or to ship the car out of the country. We have a car currently sitting at the American Embassy in Liberia. We're not really sure how it got there, but they tell us it can't leave, because if they leave, the officials in the country will literally take it for themselves. So that car is a Radnor car that ended up in the American Embassy in Liberia and Africa. Commit secondary crimes. They steal a car to go and do their business and use that second car. Insurance fraud and to trade for drugs. But I think the high-end cars, they're being sold, they're being shipped out of the country to Eastern Europe, to Africa, anywhere that they can get some money for them. So how do we prevent car thefts? A lot of our cars that are stolen are unlocked, and way too many times, the keys are left in them. We can't stress enough that the vehicles, especially in your driveway, should be locked. And by lock, we also mean the windows should be rolled up, the sunroof should be closed. If your vehicle's in the garage, you should close the garage door and lock the garage door, and lock the doors leading into the garage, and lock the doors leading into your house from the garage. All those are important. We've had situations where they go into the garage, they can get into your house. I know from being a patrol officer, we check houses all the time, that the house is locked, but we can somehow get into the garage, and all too often, it's easy to get into your house, because very few, not very few people, but a lot of people don't bother locking the door from the garage into their house. And lastly, we also recommend you lock, when you put the car in your garage, lock the Secondly, do not leave your keys in the vehicle, ever. Way too many times, we've had vehicles with keys left in them. People rifle through it, they think it's hidden. You should not hide the, quote-unquote, hide the key in the car. They live in the console, they put it under the seat, they put it under the floor mat. The key should come with you. And if you take the car, and that means if it's also in the garage or in your driveway, you should also take the keys into your house, and we would strongly advise you not to put it somewhere conspicuous where you can see it from outside, and look in into the kitchen on a hook. It should be in a drawer, it should be somewhere where it's just simply not visible. Prevent thefts from vehicles. We just encourage you to avoid leaving valuables from inside your vehicle where people can look into. There's several kinds of thefts from vehicles that we deal with. A lot of are of kids just trying to get change, but sometimes it's far more than that. They're actually looking for valuables. They're taking laptops, they're taking -- but too often, they're unlocked vehicles. We don't get a lot of smashed windows. We do get them occasionally, but the bulk of our thefts from vehicles are simply people trying every single car that's outside, an open garage door, or in the driveway. They're sitting there pulling every single one of them, and they get lucky a whole bunch of times. And out here, there's just way too many valuables left in the car.
So as we move on, we're going to speak next about our burglary situations within the township. This year, as you saw, our statistics show that it's been a good year, but one burglary's too much for Radnor and any of the other townships. So there's some prevention, and we want the public to be aware of as well with respect to that. And some of it is on the low level, some of it's common sense, but again, it's reinforcing and hardening the target. Two of the six burglaries that we had within the township occurred at unlocked residences. So again, we want to make sure that we get the word out, and just tell people it's generally safe, but make sure that you take a little bit of prevention, which will go a long way. We also, as Lieutenant Dietrich stated, we want to make sure that you make sure everything is locked on the house, and it includes the garage doors. We've been seeing an uptick in this in the region where the garage doors are left open, and obviously, there's entry made into the house. Alarm systems, if you have it, please use it. Many times, people are afraid to use it, because they're afraid it'll be a false activation. It notifies the police department. We come, and there may be a fine associated with it if there's multiple false alarms throughout the year. Again, I think the benefit outweighs, you know, the alarm citation that they might receive. And also, the other thing that we do offer is home security checks. We'll have officers come out and meet with the homeowners, do a perimeter of the house, check the interior, find out what they could do to harden their target, make it safer. Also, we recommend that during the evening and overnight hours, if you have lights, have the exterior lights on, so as officers are on the regular patrols, they can see the house from the street. You can also employ motion detectors or sensors, that if somebody comes around the rear of the house, those lights may activate. Now, the one thing that we do have from time to time, you do have animals that would come around, maybe the occasional raccoon, or the deer and whatnot, but again, it's something that we recommend for safety. The other thing is, you don't want to leave certain things out around the house. Ladders is a common thing, that officers will drive by, see a ladder popped up against the house, they'll stop, they'll make contact with the resident, and they'll remove it. But it gives the opportunity for the people that are casing an area to come and gain entry to the second floor of the residence. You don't want to leave any types of calling cards when you're away as well. So make sure that you're -- if you still get the print media, that that is canceled. We tell people to make sure your property is maintained while you're gone. Talk to your neighbors. Communication is key here, to let your neighbors on your left and right and across the street know that you'll be out for the next week or two. We strongly do not advise that you advertise on your social media pages, that you're in Bermuda, you're in Puerto Rico, you're on the beach taking pictures and whatnot, because it's coming back, because, believe it or not, some of the bad guys and girls, the burglars, are out there, and they will surf different social media pages. So don't advertise that way. No alarm company signs that we recommend. No valuables should be left in the bedroom where most people keep them. If you have high-end valuables, a secured safe in the residence, or at the Bank of Safe Deposit box. The other thing that we highly recommend, and the commissioners are well aware of it, is our vacant house program. Now that we are on the advent of our vacation season coming up, that we highly recommend it when you're away, whether it's two days or two weeks, to register your house with Radnor PD. We will check it on a daily basis, and it's only, not only for security reasons, but if there's a property issue with it while you're away, officers have been able to mitigate some broken pipes and whatnot around a house with water flowing. So that can be done either online, through our website at radnor.com, or you can call the police station during normal business hours. We'll take that information and register it. So these are some of the tips that we wanted to pass along to our residents.
Well, just that these are very, there's nothing earth-shattering here. These are very commonsensical tips, but they're simple steps you can take to reduce your chances of becoming a victim. And again, anybody has any questions, they can always contact the Radnor Police for more information, and we're going to post this up on the website as well.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Common sense, but it's good to be reminded. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we are going to move on. Item F is going to be, at the request of Commissioner Booker, moved to the new business part of the meeting, which we may or may not get to, given the speed at which we are going through this meeting. Next, we're moving to Public Works and Engineering, which is chaired by Commissioner Higgins. If you are ready to take that on.
Yes, we have, it looks like about six items tonight. The first one is Resolution 2017-67, authorizing Simone Collins to provide design services for the Radnor TAP Trail. And I think we have the consultant, consulting firm here in the audience. Would they come forward, please? And if you would introduce yourself, and then give us an overview of the resolution.
Good evening. My name is Peter Simone. I'm with Simone Collins Landscape Architecture. We've had the pleasure of working with the township over the last several years, first on the Bicycle Master Plan, which had a lot of participation, and we believe support from all the people who turned out. We helped you develop an overall Bicycle Master Plan. Based on that Master Plan, we were able to assist the township putting together application under the TAP Program, the PennDOT Transportation Alternatives Program, for $1 million. We were also able to get a grant from Pennsylvania Department of Conservation Natural Resources for $500,000, and Department of Community and Economic Development for $225,000. From that, from those grants, your obligation is to develop part of the trail that was put in the Master Plan. There's three sections. One goes from downtown Wayne to the existing Radnor Trail. It's an on-road section through most parts. The second section goes from the southern end of the existing Radnor Trail, across Route 30, around the high school, up to the existing Penn Medicine Facility. That's mostly off-road. And then the third section goes from the Septa Stadium Station on Ithan Ave, all the way down Ithan, across Bryn Mawr Avenue, under the Blue Route, and along the Cornerstone HOA property to the northern border of Marple?
Marple.
Mal, what is it? Haverford Township, thank you. So the three sections, and our proposal has a team of three consultants, ourselves, Bursage Associates for Survey, AD Marble Environmental, and Traffic Planning and Design. Total fee is $406,000. Of that, $309,000 will be paid for by the grant money. So our estimated outlay from Radnor is about $75,000. We also have an allowance in there for infiltration testing for the NPDS permit that will be required for permitting. So that's a summary, Mr. Commissioner, of how you got to this point and where we are today.
So I'd like to move for the passage of Resolution 2017-67, which would authorize Simone Collins to provide the design services.
Second.
I'd just like to add, and this is one of our more exciting, most exciting projects going on, and we've gotten, as Peter said, $1.75 million of funding to do it. To me, one of the most exciting parts about it is the connection that we'll be making with Haverford Township's trail system. And being able to transport yourself without a car from one township to another for a great distance is a goal of many people, including myself, in the region. And this plan really does, the transportation aspect of this is really exciting, because this is an alternate way to get across our township without using a car, which we like to see more and more of. And that theme came out in our Greenways Plan two years ago. Over and over again, this is what our residents want. They want places to recreate, but also for transportation between Point A and Point B without a car, and to do it safely. So that is what this project is aiming for. I also would just like to point out that there was an allowance in our bond last year for this project, specifically the West Wayne Connector part, of $150,000. So there is a set aside in the budget, in our approved budget, for that expense. So this is not money that we need to go find in our budget. That's that. I'm very excited about this, and we'll support it. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment on this board?
I just wanted to say thank you to Peter Simone for being here and for being part of this. The Greenways and Open Space Networks Committee that you talked about, I happened to serve on that, so it was a great honor to be part of that committee that helped present that Radnor map of trails and greenways and open space connectors that we adopted as, prior to my being on the board, that this board adopted as part of our township map. And it's exciting to see some of these pieces of trails really come to fruition and being engineered, so it's exciting to do that, so I support it.
Anyone else have any comment?
Yes, yes. The portions for this trail related to the school district, I'm told, are somewhat controversial, and the school district has not accepted the full plan and concept at this point. So I would urge that we involve them more, or at least get their buy-in. There's several items that have been pointed out to me. Number one, that this trail will cause significant loss of trees, and could be harmful for stormwater and other elements, and there's concerns about that. In addition, this trail will require the township to take on the burden of snow removal for large portions of the trail that they don't currently, we don't currently have, so there's some expense with that. So those are the So those are the concerns that have been raised, and again, the school district has not, at this point, signed off on the concept. So I think it's premature to move forward with it.
I just want to address, I don't, we do not conduct any snow removal on our trail system at this point. When it snows, the trail is signed, the signage is that you use it at your own risk.
No, the easement, we agreed to do snow removal on the piece that's going to go along Lancaster Avenue. That was part of the easement, the school district. That was their want.
Right.
Just Lancaster, not King of Prussia?
Right. In addition to that, we also agreed to the portion along King of Prussia Road as well, going to, near the bus depot.
And I'd also mention that the Facilities Committee has been intimately involved with this project, and in fact, has recommended to the full board that they approve it.
Again, but the full board has not weighed in on those opinions.
You're talking about the Facilities Committee of the School District, School Board?
Peter, did you have a comment on that?
I just have a comment to address Commissioner Booker's concern. Since we have now been awarded, the township's now been awarded money from PennDOT, which is federal money, we've been working closely with Solicitor Rice. And because of those regulations, the agreement with the school board is very, very detailed, and it's available, and, but they cannot sign off on it at this point, because there's a specific PennDOT process before the right-of-way for the school district or the University of Pennsylvania can be agreed to, which is a, what's called a PennDOT right-of-way, which is not really a right-of-way, it's an easement, but that's the name. So we have to produce that right-of-way plan, which we cannot do until we're about probably 50 or 60 percent through the engineering. I think the school board Facilities Committee has a full understanding of that, and so it's a, it's a, one of the, one of the requirements of the funding, that there can't be a final sign-off until that plan has been approved by PennDOT, which we won't have done until we're pretty far into the contract. So it's a technical thing, but the agreement, Mr. Rice has a copy.
Again, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is approval of the concept or consensus of the board of school directors, and we don't have that. So I'm not referring to a specific approval on specific PennDOT-related items.
Is there any other comment from this board? Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment?
Just, I want to make sure Mr. Simone tells us, what is your schedule for this? Is it in your proposal? I'm sure it's in there, but...
The schedule is, we have to have final documents. All the environmental right-of-way and utility clearances are completed by August 1st of That seems like a long way off, but if you've been through a PennDOT process, it's a very, very short time. And if the work is not done by then, funding could be in jeopardy. So it's a very tight time schedule, and it's a very demanding one.
You've listed two subcontractors, Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated and the A.D. Marble Company.
Yes, sir, and also Bersich Associates.
I saw the name Bersich, okay. Is this a turnkey contract that will have you responsible if we have, if there's a problem that A.D. Marble creates, we don't have to chase them?
Correct. You only have to chase us, sir. And they will be subconsultants to us.
All right, thank you.
Okay, public comment? Hi, Maya, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Maya Vemrasim. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here because I'm absolutely opposed to the project, at least as I understand it currently. I do not understand that the Facilities Committee has recommended approval to the school board. When I watched the video on tape, my understanding is that they sort of wanted the township to go first, before they made their recommendation. That's how I heard it. I do not believe in killing nature for purposes of creating a nature trail. I think that sets a bad precedent. I think it's the wrong direction to go. I think it's a waste of money and wholly inappropriate, particularly when here we have another alternative. And it's an alternative that hasn't been explored, from what I can see. If the goal is to get, as the gentleman said, to get from the Radnor Trail around the Radnor High School to the Penn Medicine lands, there's already a sidewalk that does that. If you'd like to find a way to accommodate bicycle traffic, to make that safer, then look at that current route around and the road system, and look at the kinds of options they do in the city of Philadelphia to accommodate bicycle traffic, to take yourself around to that same spot that you're talking about getting to here. But I think cutting trees, damaging water quality, damaging a creek, damaging wetlands, creating stormwater issues, creating pollution problems, potentially from a stream that has already been identified as pollution, as all streams of Radnor Township have, is not the right way to go. You're going to be, I, it's been very difficult to get information on what's been proposed, but what I've been able to glean from the materials provided me by the school district, there's going to be tree clearing, there's going to be land manipulation, there's going to be impervious surfaces that are created. You're going to necessarily encroach into the forest, onto a stream that, when it comes out of that forest, is already deeply impacted by the sports fields. So you're going to be creating stormwater that has to be managed. We already have enough stormwater issues around our township that we're trying to invest in managing. I wrote a detailed letter in the time I had that I shared with the Board of Commissioners and the school board. If anybody in the public would like a copy of that letter, I'm happy to provide it. But I just think that this is a bad investment, and I think destroying nature so that people can claim to enjoy nature is wrong. And this nature belongs to the kids. It belongs to the kids of the school district. And Radnor Township is once again looking to take away nature, to take away open space from the school district kids, to give it to the broader public for a use that I think is wholly inappropriate. So I just wanted to come up and state for the record, I think it's a bad idea, and especially tonight, when I hear the amount of money that the township is looking to invest in this option, I'm really appalled. You're creating nature problems, you're creating stormwater problems that you're going to have to address, when goodness knows we have enough of these issues in Radnor Township as already. We have too little open space, and too much stormwater runoff, and too much pollution. And while I'm up here talking about stormwater, I think you've got a really bad path ahead of you when it comes to stormwater and complying with the state permit already, the MS4 permit. The township is not on a good path on that, and so we'll talk about that later. But I think you're already in trouble, and you're just making your problems worse, and ours worse.
Can I ask you, are the plans in such detail at this point, that you can back up what you say, that this will cause pollution and cutting of trees and all? How do you know those things?
So as I said, from the amount of information that I've been able to obtain, which is very little, and that's been one of my big complaints, we're making this big investment with, based on very little information. But when you just drive by the school district, and you look at the map that's been provided, and you look at a 30-foot easement, and then you look at cutting a minimum 10-foot trail along the roadway, even if you were to cut that trail directly from the edge of the road 10 feet in, you're talking about encroachments, land manipulation, and tree cutting. When you start talking about a 30-foot easement, and where this trail may go into there, that makes the problem worse. So yeah, admittedly, there's a lack of information, but just going to the property and trying to figure it out based on the maps that were provided to me, this is what I see coming down the pike. And again, I don't see the alternative that does not require that kind of impact being considered at all, and that's a concern.
Also, it's 14 feet, I think, in total for the path, because it's two feet on either side.
On the shoulders.
And plus two, so it'll be 14-foot wide swath, needs to be cut.
Mr. Simone, are you in a position to respond to any of that? Please.
First of all, all the plans that have been produced are public. The Bicycle Master Plan is a public document, I believe it's on the township website. The application that we produced that PennDOT, DCNR, and DCD all felt merited, one of the largest TAP grants in the state, is public information. So all that information's public. Everything we've produced is accessible to anyone who needs it, first of all. Second, all the things the young lady mentioned, gloom and doom, we're prohibited from doing by law. We have to go through the Conservation District review and approval. We have to get...
That's the Delaware County Conservation District.
We have to get our NPDS permit, which also goes through the Conservation District, which you know is stringent and prevents everything the young lady mentioned. In terms of the plan around the school, the other thing is, about 80 percent of the length of the trail is already on paved surfaces. There's very little new trail being cut. Most of it is, as correctly stated, around the school district. The school district, as part of their agreement, has review and approval of the plans. Part of that agreement is we have to replace any trees that are removed, and certainly our goal is to remove as few trees as possible. There are large areas where we won't have to remove trees, and there are some areas where we will. But those trees will be replaced, and as I mentioned, the school district has review and approval of the trail. We haven't finalized trail surface yet. Parts of it would be asphalt, some could be stoned us, parts could be pervious asphalt. That's part of the design process. So as our team's...
At this point, though, why wouldn't you make a commitment to have all of it pervious?
Well, it has a, it's not necessarily a good thing. I mean, on a surface, pervious surface sounds better, but based upon the NPDS permit, and also the maintenance requirement that would be placed upon the township to maintain that section of trail, it may be a lot more maintenance, and it may not really yield a stormwater benefit. We won't know that until we do our stormwater calculations and look at exactly what the NPDS permit requirements are. We don't know that at this point, because this is the whole reason you go through the engineering. We can't give a finite number of trees that will be removed, because we have to complete the survey. There's no survey available that tells us where the right-of-way is in relationship to the school district property. One of the things we're going to find out when we have our survey done is, there may be sections along the school district where we are mostly in the PennDOT right-of-way and require very little of the school district property as an easement. And that's why we don't know exactly where that trail sits in space. So because of all these detailed engineering requirements, these are some of the things that have to be worked out. But I think the bottom line for protection of both the school district and the township and the environment is, we have some very stringent regulations that we have to adhere to, just like any development, any land development would, to make sure that we do protect the environment. Will we remove some trees? Yes, but they'll be replaced.
Thank you, Peter. Is there any other commissioner comment?
I'm sorry, I have to respond. I'm offended that I, you got up and you told me that everything I said was false. First off, I do this by profession.
Maya, can you please keep your comments directed to the board?
I do this right by profession. In fact, not only is it not false, but he actually acknowledged that it was true. He acknowledged that there was going to be tree removal. He acknowledged that there were going to be impervious surfaces. He questioned whether or not pervious surfaces would be appropriate. He talked about the fact that there needs to be a NEPD permit, in which case you're going to have increased stormwater runoff. The regulations in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, if you likened himself to a development project, will development projects result in increased stormwater runoff volume, including increased contaminants?
Maya, I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
You certainly can do that. You certainly can do that. But again, everything that the gentleman said actually confirmed my concerns for the portion of this project going through the school district.
Thank you for that opinion.
And it's not an opinion, it's actually correct. I, please, the gentleman got up here and just impugned my integrity. All I want to do is confirm for the public that these are legitimate concerns, and I'd like that to be heard and be appropriate for the record.
Also, yeah, there's, I'm told that there's also some major sign poles...
Jim.
And, two bridges.
Can you...
Two bridges that are, that are going to be impacted. Also, I guess the bottom line is, if the school district says no, then we don't, I mean, they can kill it, right? So I mean, it'll be, you know, it'll be on them.
So the school district can be responsible for us losing $1.75 million in grants that benefit the people of Radnor Township?
I just want to know what the process is.
No, that's what you're saying.
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying, if we can approve it, if they say no, then what? Are we going forward despite that or not?
All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the...
So John said, as we continue to negotiate, if...
Well, the project is only partially on school property, so there's still a balance...
Critical portion.
There's a balance that can be included in the grant application.
Okay, we have a little more public comment, if you'd like to come on up. Good evening, Tony.
Good evening. Toni Bailey, Conestoga Village. What I'm not, I have a question. If you're going to take down trees and then replant them, why would you take them down in the first place? Does that mean you're going to replant trees in another area?
Often it's in another area.
So what kind of trees will you be replacing with the ones that you've cut down? Will they be the same species?
We would adhere to our shade tree ordinance, which dictates how many of what caliber, and that we would adhere to that.
And so that would produce the same kind of CFP, the same kind of protection?
In theory, over time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else from the public? Hello, Jim?
Hi, Jim Gigerich. This gentleman, he mentioned that the plans are all accessible. Well, where are those plans accessible? Can they be found on the Radnor website? And he also threw out some phrases using the alphabet soup for different ordinances and things. I think anytime the alphabet soup is being used, it would be appropriate to explain first what that alphabet means, because I myself, I don't know, I probably won't be looking it up to find out, but I think it's something that should be made available. Even in the minutes for the agenda for the commissioners' meetings, sometimes there's some things put in there that it would just make it a little bit easier if you spelled something out instead of the alphabet. Thank you.
Yeah, the plans are available on the website.
It's, Jim, it's the NPDES permit. That's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and it was coined by an act of Congress when they amended the Clean Water Act.
All right, seeing no further public comment, I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the passes six to one. Jim, you want to continue on with public work?
Yes. The next item is a presentation and possible motion on the repair and cleaning of the North Wayne Field Basin and possible mitigation projects. I requested that this be placed on the agenda. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Norsini in a moment. We had anticipated that Dan Wyble, our outside consultant with the firm of CH2M, would be here to make a presentation, and that's a critical element of moving ahead on this repair and cleaning. So Steve, why don't you outline where we are in this project?
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. I'll just step through the memorandum that was in your packet. So as part of the township-wide study, the board directed Dan Wyble of CH2M to model the North Wayne Field Basin in its current state versus its clean state, and, which he did. And prior to that, I'm sorry, I should back up, the board did allocate $185,000 for the cleaning of the basin. So that has not been moved on yet. So in Dan's original presentation of the two, five, 10, and 25-year frequency storms, it showed that there was a slight increase in floodwater depth at Planton Willow Avenue with the cleaning of the basin. And obviously, this caused concern for the residents in that area of North Wayne. In his final version of the study, which he just presented to the board a month or two ago, the only version that, the only frequency storm that was modeled was a 10-year event, and that showed a marginal benefit to the area. So the difference between the two models is, the one that we saw in the fall, where five storms, I'm sorry, where four storms were modeled, was not quite as refined as that final version. So we contacted Dan and asked him to come tonight. Unfortunately, he's sick, he will not be able to make it. He sent me an email this afternoon. What we did request of Dan was CH2M will use the more refined model to model the four storms that were originally done, and provide information to the board as to whether... storms that were originally done and provide information to the board as to whether there is a benefit, where there would be a benefit, where there would not be a benefit, and what those actual numbers would be, based on his slides. And subsequent to that, for him to provide possible projects for mitigation, if it was shown on his slides that perhaps Plant and Willow were receiving additional floodwater depth. So to mitigate any possible increase in floodwater depth downstream of the basin, he would put forth projects that will reduce stormwater runoff to the basin, thereby reducing the overall flow from the basin outfall. For instance, if the- and this is just by no means a suggestion, it would just put out, for instance, if the Green Streets project amongst others could equal that, then that's what he was going to bring forth. And clearly, no movement in any direction would take place without the explicit direction of the board. The intent of the presentation was to provide the board with the most relevant data we have on hand to be able to make informed decisions. Again, unfortunately, with Dan being sick today, we don't have his slides, so I can't even tell you if and what any slides show an increase or a decrease in floodwater depth. We don't have that information. And that would also make a determination if mitigation projects were needed or not.
Well, it sounds as if we really need his findings.
It must have been a bad weekend for engineers because our engineer from T and M is also sick, but he sent a substitute, the gentleman that was here last week. But yeah, so that-
I just, I want to just set the scene here a little bit. We've heard comments tonight about the concern of people downstream from Poplar Avenue, that is, people living on Pennsylvania and Willow Avenues. And my goal from the beginning, when I inherited this problem in 2012, when I was first born in, was to come up with a solution that protects people's property, their lives, and our environment. And to do that with proper engineering backed up by good science. We all know that for a long time, we had assumed that a particular engineering option advocated by the firm from Chagrin Valley, Chagrin, Ohio, Chagrin Falls, Ohio, Chagrin Valley Engineering, was the solution to the North Wayne Basin problem. That's the so-called Option E. The Dan Wyble findings in the township-wide study did not give us hard evidence that going with Option E, which was a very expensive project, would be the right solution. It would be a solution, but maybe not the most cost-effective. So we then, in my judge, in my approach then, was to revert to finding a way to clean out the basin, to make it work so that people on North Wayne Avenue and Poplar would not be flooded out, and also to not do harm to anybody downstream. So the issue of harm to people downstream is an open issue. We'll wait with great anticipation of Mr. Wyble's findings. I want to stop now and pick up on another point, and that is the pipe outfall on Poplar Avenue. The people on Poplar are most concerned that they are suffering grievously from the direction of that pipe outfall. As you know, Steve, that pipe collects water from North Wayne Avenue, from West Avenue, from the Business District, from Poplar Avenue, and when it enters Gulf Creek, it goes in at a perpendicular angle. The people on Poplar Avenue feel that that should be diverted so it doesn't come in at a perpendicular angle. I've talked with Commissioner Curly on this, who is a civil engineer and certainly more knowledgeable than I am on hydrology. I'll let him speak to this issue, but I think his view is that there's no proof at this point that the way that water comes into the creek is causing the back flooding of Poplar. I don't know the answer to that. I do know this, that we ought to be able to have, we have science at our hand, within our reach, and we ought to be able to, we ought to be able to find consulting firm that can give us an answer. That is, is the current configuration of the pipe a cause of back flooding of the properties on Poplar, or isn't it? And secondly, if it is the current cause of flooding on, partially the cause of flooding on Poplar, if it is diverted to a 45-degree angle, would that in fact wreak havoc downstream? Would that cause additional problems downstream? So I'd like the rest of the board now to seriously consider finding answers to that conundrum or that problem by perhaps looking in the direction of hiring a firm to give us those answers.
Well, the long and short of it is, we don't have the information tonight to make any decisions on or any possible motions on repair and cleaning, because we don't have any information about the results of that, and we also don't have information or recommendations on the mitigating measures. This, though, in my opinion, is a little fortuitous in that it's my understanding that our next meeting, we will also be receiving from our staff their recommendations, their prioritizations of our projects moving forward, based on their modified version of criteria coming out of that stormwater report. And I think that's very important because this, we will get a recommendation from staff as to where this project, North Wayne, that problem area falls in terms of how we're going to invest, which my guess is that would be a top priority. And then we will sort of take a holistic view of how, based on those recommendations and from the report, how we are going to deal with it, which may include cleaning out, and it may also include other items from the menu of things that were put forth, the Green Streets, the SEPTA, the whatnot. But I much prefer to do it holistically at once, once with staff's priorities in hand, so that we're not taking these things piecemeal. And it may be that during that discussion, if indeed North Wayne is a priority area and we move forward, that that new bit of information is put into the mix.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
I think also the Stormwater Advisory Committee has been working on this too as well, and I believe they're probably going to be here as well. And they'll also have some suggestions too. So I think their input is just as valuable too as part of this.
Great. That's good news.
Yeah, just so my thoughts on this. So Jim and I talked about this. I had voted to approve funds for the cleaning back when we put that in the budget in fall, I believe. So my logic then, and it's still my logic now, that we have an obligation to operate effective infrastructure. And if we have reason to believe that it's not effective, then we should commit funds to make it effective. So that was my reasoning then. I expect that I will vote for it when the time comes. Jim and I talked about some conditions, and one of those conditions was that there would be no, the pipe realignment wouldn't happen unless there was engineering. So, you know, we previously, we had some, you know, I think we approved that two or three years ago based on a YouTube video. So there won't be any action on that unless we have engineering. When we do or if we do the engineering remains to be seen. But, you know, a condition for me is that I won't support the one project unless there is a commitment from the board not to proceed with the realignment, unless there is engineering that proves it to be harmless. And then a second condition would be that in conjunction with approval to clean out the basin, I would be willing to vote for the engineering necessary for those projects that we talked about to evaluate the effect of those projects downstream, to get that mitigating effect. So-
Those projects are the Green Streets on West Avenue? Is that one of them?
Yeah, that was one of them. That's the one that we discussed. Apparently, though, will be more, so I'm just-
Well, the SEPTA parking lot, the lower parking lot is already in the works.
So I anticipate that when we, you know, we'll refine this, but I would anticipate there'll be an action item at the next meeting, most likely, Jim. And that's likely the way that I see myself going with this.
All right. Steve, could I, and Bob, could I ask that you start thinking about a firm that could give us the scientific evidence for the effects of changing the pipe configuration at Poplar? We would need to have a before and after analysis. That is, what is the current situation? Does it in fact cause back flooding to the homes on Poplar? And if it's changed, would it presumably eliminate that problem, but it would create a problem downstream?
Correct me if I'm wrong here. I'm sorry, go ahead. I think we already have that, and I would think, and I agree with Don, I would not proceed with that realignment of the pipe right now, that I would proceed along what Don spoke about. We proceed with that. I think we've got other issues that we would want to deal with from that pipe further down. So I think we've got enough of that data. So again, engaging somebody else to do that, I think we've got that. And I think when you bring in Dan, I think we've already got that information on the realignment of the pipe. So I think to go and spend more money on that again, I think we've got the information. So I don't think we need to spend that money again.
Subtle distinction. I'm not, I don't know that the realignment is a good idea. I'm not committing to funds for that. I'm just saying, saying part of my, if I'm going to approve the cleanout, it's going to be conditioned on the pipe realignment not happening unless we have hard engineering to show that it's harmless.
Yeah, I think they're separate things.
It can be reasonable to get a proposal. Well, I don't want us committing any money to that project at this point. If you want to get a proposal from somebody, we'll evaluate it, but at this point, no money for that.
No, I agree. They're separate things. The cleanout will rise and fall based on what we learned from Dan Wyble. And the pipe cleanout would be collateral to that, but I do think, I don't think we have the evidence, Bob. I don't think we know, as Don said, we have a YouTube video of ping pong balls floating on Poplar.
I think we've got, I think we have that. So I'll go back with Steve and make sure we do, but I think we have it. So I think we, I agree, we should focus on what we have from that point further back. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, I think it's along those same lines, we're looking from that point and back with those projects. And I think we leave the pipe realignment right now for projects going from that point further down. So it's from the basin along back up. And leave the realignment, go.
I'm going to ask that we move along. We have a lot left in our agenda. We have everyone's opinions on the table. Next week, next meeting, we will hear the priority recommendations and Wyble's report, and we will go from there. Next, well, we're not making any decisions tonight.
We should have, I think we should have, we always allow public comment. I think it would be appropriate.
Okay, great. Let's have some public comment, then.
I'll make it as brief as possible. The retaining of CH2M to do more precise modeling is great. I think you need to go because of the Brett's implications, liability implications. You just have to get used to that being a component of every project you consider from here on out.
Ken, would it be appropriate for Peter, are you able to elaborate on that? And you did get some information on that? Is that something you think you can share or shouldn't share? What you-
Well, I think it's a bit premature to share. I think we're still analyzing it, and, you know, I don't think we need to get into a discussion. And to be honest, you know, I think John's much more versed in this, and at the point where we're ready to have that discussion, we'll have it. Right now, I'm fine with the direction, and John is fine with the direction the township is going.
Okay, so just know that we didn't ignore it. We did-
No, I know, you asked John last time.
I've talked to, Ken, I've talked to John about this briefly. There's a huge factual difference between the facts in Bucks, in Brett's versus Bucks County School District and Radnor, North Wayne Field. Huge difference.
Jim, I read you the standard in my first public comment.
Okay, let me finish, please. Ken, Ken.
No matter how significant any increase subjects this board, the township, to liability. The reason for requesting the fine modeling is because you can rest assured that you can proceed without having to anticipate additional expenses related to that project to cover the liability, whether those are defense expenses or there are expenses to go to the potential property owners who would be impacted and buy an easement from all of them, which would add cost to the project.
Well, Ken, all I'll say is that-
Jim, let's just let Ken do his public comment, okay?
Add cost to the project. So go for it. I'm going to be surprised to find that Dan, who made the same size arrows on the 10 and the 25-year storm on Willow Avenue, that all of a sudden, one of those has changed, that arrow has gone from in the other direction. But I'm willing to hold out and see what he brings in. I'm just saying that I think this board, for purposes of avoiding liability and Brett's, and just making the citizens feel like you're, and you guys feel like you're not doing anything unintendedly bad to people, that you've got to get used to spending this kind of money on the modeling. As far as the pipe realignment, I requested Dan to do the evaluation that indicated the conditions on Willow Avenue having to do with both the Option E and the cleanout, and asked at that time in front of the Stormwater Advisory that he would add the pipe so that you guys would have the information on both. When he came back with the report to you on November 14th and to SWAC, he said, "I cannot model the pipe outfall." So along with what Don is saying, if the engineering is just not attainable at any price, then I've got to defer to what Don says, that he's uncomfortable, as I think this board should be, with proceeding with something that can't be modeled as far as unintended consequences.
Also, Peter, it's obviously at appropriate time to hear your analysis on this case that Ken's bringing up, because Ken keeps bringing it up. So waiting for it, I think, is not the right thing.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment? Hello again, Jim?
Okay, I've got a question for Steve as far as the cleanout and fix-up of the North Wayne Basin. I've tried for a couple of years now to get actual detailed drawings of how that basin was designed, in particular, the way the discharge system of it was built. We've heard that when it was cleaned out, that the flooding was worse. Well, that could be, it could be an imagination, but it very likely is the case. That would be caused because of, the cause would be the fact that it allows too much water at some certain points to relieve the basin. You can't really work with the system unless you know what you're working with. We don't have that information. As far as the pipe, a minor diversion, if you diverted it 30 degrees, not 45, I think it would assist. I doubt very much it would cause a significant change in the total downfield flow. But I've got another question. Excuse me, back a couple of months ago, you approved money for cleaning out the pipeline in front of the firehouse, and also cleaning out the pipeline under Poplar Avenue. Has anything been done on that, or is it scheduled?
We approved the study of that, and we received that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I may interject, this was a pipeline, so this was the Poplar Road culvert? Mr. Gigerich?
Yes.
Other side, sir, turn around. To your left.
Hi, Mr. Gigerich. So those two items were, at the firehouse, there is a small stormwater management system that was full of sediment, and that was cleaned, that project was, and that's just to get that back into operating shape. The other portion of that-
I wanted to hear that.
The other portion of that was to remove built-up sediment under the culvert at Poplar Avenue. Nothing more, nothing less, nothing comp, it's strictly a maintenance item. And both of those projects, for lack of a better term, are complete.
Looking at Poplar Avenue and the stream, Gulf Creek coming down through there, it looks like it's pretty much overgrown now with the, you can't really tell from the surface because of the branches overhanging it, they may not be obstructing the water. But I'm sure that you're having your people take a look at it from time to time. By the way, I did see a couple of people from your department going around checking the flows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Really quickly, I was just looking at the Banbury Way handouts, and I have continuing concerns when I look at the advantages that are listed. The kinds of advantages that Radnor Township needs to be looking for in every single dollar spent on stormwater projects is not even acknowledged in this list, which suggests to me that your mindset is still a little off-base, which is concerning to me. I don't see, and also in the conversation tonight, I don't ever hear as a primary focus, volume reduction, which is what deals with your pollution problems, your flood damage reduction, your erosion problems, all of those issues. I don't see pollution reduction- I don't see pollution reduction or pollution prevention discussed anywhere.
Maya, Maya, we're not on Vanbury yet, but when we get, when we get there, I'm going to ask those questions. But we're not there yet.
I understand, but I'm referring to.
People want to talk on.
I am talking on this issue.
No, the people back there want to talk on this issue that we have now.
I am talking on this issue because I'm talking about the discussion that you had, which is also included in this, so that way I don't have to get up and talk about Vanbury Way either. The pollution reduction issues, erosion prevention, I don't hear ever a mention of how the projects or the analysis or the information you're looking to get from Dan Wyble reflects on how each of the projects or the modeling is going to help you comply with your regulatory requirements and your permit requirements come August. I do think that Radnor's ability to comply with its permit obligations down the road is greatly in jeopardy. And so every single conversation you have, every bit of information you get from Dan, every project you reflect on, every investment you discuss, needs to have these elements that I just mentioned as a high priority in your decision-making. And I'm concerned that I continue to never hear any of them come out of your mouths in any one of these discussions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
Okay, I'm going to be really quick. I, first of all, just want to say thank you, which I wanted to say before, the fact that we're even discussing it, it's a recognition that there is a problem and we're trying to find a solution. We're talking a lot about engineering and looking for results. Well, I have this piece of paper, and then when I look at it, I do see that there are some results, so forgive me if I didn't fully understand that there's more information to be had, and I did want to wait until the next meeting, but thought I would just quickly get up and ask a question. Does this project or these projects or any other ones that will come about, they're paid for from the stormwater fee, money that is collected? So I guess a question would be, how is it fair, I hate to use that word because I don't necessarily think that life is fair, but how is it appropriate to be taking X amount of dollars for, from however many people live in the areas that are going to see no improvement or even worse, Willow Avenue, which looks to show more water on the street? So that would be a question moving forward. How is their input into the improvement of the stormwater issue seen here? And then a final thought, the water has to go somewhere. So when I think, where does the water go? Well, I happen to work at Eastern University, so I see where a lot of that water ends up. And I'm wondering, has there been engineering or research into the actual flow of water from the North Wayne Basin all the way down to where, you know, wherever Radnor Township ends and the water keeps going? I'm just thinking, you know, the angle of the pipe, to me, it's hard to imagine that that could really make a difference, but that once it's full, it's an indication that wherever the water is going, it's not moving quick enough or it's not being distributed properly. So just a thought. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on now to the next item. Jim, which is I.
Next item is sidewalks. Authorizing the Department of Community and Economic Development grant application submission for the sidewalks at Lancaster Avenue and South Devon Road and Glen Mary Lane. This is Resolution 2017-68, and I expressly omitted North Wayne Avenue when I read that because we've already approved, in our last meeting, we already approved an application to DCED for the North Wayne sidewalk near Eagle Road.
Did you just move that?
I will, I'll move the introduction of Resolution 2017-68 without reference to North Wayne Avenue. I'd like to make a suggestion that we separate these items, not bundle them, and vote on each one separately.
I got a suggestion too, so I don't know.
You have what?
A suggestion also. So with, between Bob, Amy, myself, there was some emails back and forth about the South Devon project being small enough to come out. I think we could make it even smaller, save some money, and then do it as part of this year's budget using the money that was set aside. There's about $150,000 set aside for projects like this. And the sidewalk alone would be, you know, somewhere around $50,000. Is that correct, Amy? That's my recollection.
I had some questions when you had sent that email asking for clarification on that, because you didn't specifically include the, excuse me, the curb ramps. So that's why we set this up as a piecemeal type thing. So the first thing that you had talked about and discussed was just the sidewalks. Whereas the ADA requirements require you to complete those connections to any connecting sidewalks.
Okay.
So that's where the next group comes into, basically putting in the flush ramps for At Liberty, and then switching to the next page. In my opinion, you would have to at least pull in that $18,000 into your project, so you'd be looking at $67,000 in order to meet ADA requirements.
So I would like, I would prefer to scale it back to that $67,000 version and do it this year. If the board doesn't want to do that, then it would just go in the pot with the other ones. But that would be my preference.
Well, I would say for each of these three projects.
I mean, two at this point, I mean.
There's the Lancaster one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's Lancaster, Glen Mary, and South Devon. Three. I would like to know for each one, before I support, I mean, in general, I support these sidewalks, but before we commit money to each one of these three, there are two things that I'd like to know. One, where are matches coming from, if it's budgeted? And if not, where it would come from? Two, has, have, who, how many landowners are being affected by this sidewalk, and are they on board? Because these projects get derailed by the landowners. And if these, the landowners on whose property these sidewalks are going, are not fully on board, and are going to, it's going to come back to haunt us, and we're going to have wasted the engineering money. So those are the two questions I have for each of the projects.
May I can answer the two for South Devon? So for South Devon, there's only two properties. That's why it's a link, because it's essentially, you've got about 1,500 people that live on one side of South Devon, 1,500 people that live on the other side of South Devon. 100% of those people have sidewalk, 99.99% of those people have sidewalk, stop sign, traffic light access to Morris and South Devon. And then to get to the trail, or to get to downtown, so this is not, it's not just the trail, it's not just downtown. It's also, it's more than the park, it's the, it's the transportation network, meaning as Merle said.
I get that, but how about the two landowners?
So the two, the two landowners then are aware and willing, let's put it that way. No one is enthusiastic about this when you do it to their property, but aware and willing. And then part of this is, we should be able to stay in the right-of-way. That's what I communicated.
I know, yes. I know that, but that doesn't really matter.
I think you're, I think it's a mistake for you to, to just, you know, yes, this can be uncomfortable for two people, but that's what we do. We, we've got a greater good for something on the order of 3,000 people.
Do I need to remind you of Shimonie?
Which is why we have the right-of-way. So to me, it's a, it's a good use of, it's the sort of thing that we should be aspiring to do.
Okay, and in this case, I, I mean, I agree with you in every case, but there have been many instances in the past where the landowners did not want it, and we would have, we had basically political warfare about it because some commissioners, it's just, before we engage in the, and commit money to these projects, I want to hear from the proponents that we have landowner buy-in. And then I'm fully for it.
Okay. I would consider it landowner buy-in. I don't want to mislead you to think that they are enthusiastic about it, but it was, the conversation was about respecting the interests of the people, meaning there's going to be a design, you know, the one fellow talked about his tree and his plantings. And what I said is, we would, because we always do this, we would have, you know, if we affected them, we would have compensatory planting. You know, that's part of that would get worked out in the design phase, but we can accommodate. And he was, he was on board with this idea of, you know, the kids have to walk in the street to get to the bus stop, and that's not necessarily a good idea. So I think there's community support for it, and I think there's, I would characterize it more as a recognition on the part of the residents that this is a contribution they have to make to the greater good.
Okay. How about the Lancaster sidewalk?
Well, at this point, that's a new requirement. We have not talked to the specific landowners on those things. It kind of depends on how much of the right-of-way we can use. I think Don's point, that if there are a number of hedges, many of them are in not great shape, but if some of the plantings need to be disturbed as part of this project, you know, if we were to make it a whole with compensatory plantings, I think that would go a long way.
How many landowners are there?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, I would say about a dozen, I think, somewhere along that line, because there's a number of streets that it crosses over. It would be, I mean, it would be less than a dozen. I'm willing to talk to them and go out this weekend or prior to this weekend and have this fully discussed with them prior to this. We have letters of support from a number of community organizations, Carrington Coalition, Brinrose Society, Brinrose Association, community groups, as well as Bob Zakowski mentions, I think Pendot also put out a letter of support, as well as Villanova University. So there's a lot of things to do, and I'm willing to do it as long as we have an appetite to actually go forward on this. You know, and have some sense of a consensus of the board to go forward, then let's, then let's go ahead and do it so we can talk specifics with these folks. And they are certainly affected, they are certainly affected themselves because they have numerous people walking back and forth in front of them or at the sides of their properties. So to the extent that we might be able to either put up fencing or better shielding in terms of plantings, would certainly benefit them, I would think, and as well as improvement of their property. These are existing sidewalks now, it's not like you're putting new sidewalks in. And of course, the problem is that these sidewalks have, because of roadway pavings are just sinking, are less, in some cases, almost flush with the roadway, which causes problems for people that are passing by. And as we know, we're getting ready to put, Villanova's getting ready to put over 1,100 students right next to that property there, where their method of getting down to downtown Bryn Mawr is going to go right past this spot.
Right.
So, as well as people that live as residents in five different neighborhoods and two different condominiums and apartment houses right there, that use that on a daily basis as well to get the transportation and recreation.
And the $38,000 match or design money for, or grant, putting the grant together, where is that coming from?
Well, Bill, I asked Bill White if he would like to take a crack at finding out where that money, we could get that from, and I haven't heard the answer yet, so, but I do want to ask him how he made out. So Bill, what do you have?
Well, the manager, Steve Norsini, and I got together when the agenda was finalized. The one, I mean, obviously, the $150,000 is in the budget and can be allocated as the board sees fit, but it's also very finite. The other option that's available or that is up for discussion is that the board, or the capital budget for 2017 included $200,000 for the resurfacing of the South Wayne parking lot. As part of our discussion, and Steve, I apologize, I'm going to put you on the spot, but due to the library improvements and delays in getting that finalized, it's not likely that that $200,000 is going to be used for that resurfacing this year. That could be up for reallocating if the board would like to do that. That would cover not just the Lancaster, not just the planning, but it would, it would cover the full match as it's been projected in the legislative summary for that sidewalk and the others. We would, we'd cover all three.
Might even cover the South Devon.
Yes. Yes. That was part of what we were trying to accomplish when we were looking at it, is a larger solution. And so, Bill, if we did that, then we would be able, we would essentially do the engineering for those projects that require engineering in order to be part of a grant, and we would be able to immediately start with the projects that are not part of the grant. So like, the South Devon part, we could start immediately. Subject to bidding, but yes. Yes. And then the others, we would do the engineering and get them to the grant-ready position. And then if they don't win the grant, we can just do this every year until they win the grant. Because it'll, it'll be a minimal cost, a de minimis cost, similar to what we had with the North Wayne Avenue project. Absolutely. Or it could be, it could go to another project that comes up. It's, it would be at the board's discretion.
That $200,000 would just go, be reinserted into the budget next year?
Well, the appropriations would be shifted to the sidewalk projects.
But like, for next year, when we're going to need to repave South Wayne?
Yeah, so South Wayne would move to 18.
And that was a capital expense, or in the, it was?
Yes. So if we decided to do that, we could pass, if we pass this resolution tonight, as it's written, then you would come back at a subsequent meeting with the mechanism to, to make the money, transfer it in the way that we could make it operational? Yes, and amendments to the budget, I'll double-check with John. It's either an ordinance or a resolution, but whatever the mechanism is, we'll, we can have it the next meeting. So my sense is, we approve the resolution tonight, that we take action on it tonight, and we let the staff then take action to make it happen.
And Bill, thank you. Bill, thanks for finding out where, how we could do this and achieve it, because as we discussed, the nice thing about this particular project and grant is that we're really getting almost a two-and-a-half-time payback on this in terms of the grants. You know, we're putting in $38,000, we're getting back over $100,000, that's a two-and-a-half time match on that. And the nice thing of that, this really turns out to be an investment. This has been before this board before, we did not know the exact costs, we have some idea now, but once it's all fully engineered or at least, you know, put together, we'll have some hard costs on that, so we can go out to partners or other grant people and know exactly what we're talking about, so we can build some momentum. If we miss this one, we'll be in better shape for a subsequent one to go ahead and get. And this could actually be something that we could see, I'll say, in our lifetime, that this thing could actually happen, which is, which is a very positive thing for this ward and this, that section. So thank you.
Can we hear a little bit about the Glen Mary? How many landowners are affected?
One landowner, three parcels. Landowners already contributing one-third of the, of the length.
There's only one property, one landowner it's going over? Where is, that's pretty short.
It is, it's very short. Glen Mary.
It's not going the length of Glen Mary? So where is it going from?
At the end of Glen Mary.
But it's 200.
From where to where?
From the parcels that are at the end, the three parcels at the end of Glen Mary and King of Prussia Road.
This is, if I may interject, so this is on Glen Mary, the eastern side. This was formerly in Lombardi, was in before the board.
Oh, yeah.
And there was an existing building up on King of Prussia, which he purchased. There is an adjacent lot, which is where he's required to put the sidewalk, and he also owns this third property.
So it's just on one property?
It's, well, it would, it would go across three properties, right? So it would be the one property on King of Prussia and Glen Mary, east side. The next adjacent property, he has to put sidewalk in as part of his approval. And then there is a third property that he happens to own, which that sidewalk would go through. So we'd be putting sidewalk, we'd be paying for sidewalk on two properties.
And Rich, Steve, this was a, we had a land development project two or three years ago, we had a conversation like this, at least that's my recollection. We made the developer put a sidewalk, there was that, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, and we said, I seem to recall that, we said, "No, we might want to continue that sidewalk." So to me, to me, this is a good logical, we want to look for links. We get, we get benefit when we find the link. I think it makes sense.
So this is where Belrose comes to Glen Mary? And so it would be like from Belrose to, you know?
It's north of Belrose. Or, I'm sorry.
North of Belrose. Northeast.
Yes.
East, yeah, east of.
Right. Yeah, I know the houses that Lombardi did, but now, and.
But it's 250 feet, and it's only one property owner that has to give consent?
Correct. He owns them all.
And if, the price that we have in our materials.
All in the right-of-way.
What, are $24,000? Is that, just seems like a small amount of, that's a large number for a small segment.
It actually includes upgrading that flashing light to a rectangular rapid flashing beacon.
I see.
So it'll be pedestrian-activated rather than constantly flashing yellow.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is that because?
Over King of Prussia Road.
Is that a state law requirement when we do this project?
No, it's not. It's, you've got an elementary school, and there are students. It's, you've got an elementary school and there are students that want to walk and do walk across the street there and this is to provide...
So, it will help them?
Better, better access.
Okay.
This is what, that's what we required Villanova to put in on Eithan Avenue for the crosswalk from the south campus over.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I, I just, Don and I talked about South Devon and I'm supporting it. I, I'm not sure how, since the, Amy, the proposed sidewalk on South Devon terminates on the south end at Grass Yard and terminates on the north end at Grass. In other words, it's 140 feet that goes, doesn't connect to other sidewalks.
That's not true. They're connecting at Morris Circle and Morris Road and then you would cross Devon Avenue to get from Morris Circle to Morris Road and then it also connects down to Liberty Lane, which is where the trail comes in.
So, you would walk on one side of South Devon safely on sidewalks, cross at Morris to Liberty.
Correct. And you can't...
Or to Morris Circle and then...
And I thought it might be cheaper to have the crossing at Liberty Lane, but Commissioner Curley pointed out to me that there was a driveway across the road and so you can't take access at that location, so this was the only option.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any staff comment?
I have a question, Commissioner, just so I'm aware. So, Project One was already approved, that was the sidewalk on North Wayne. Or is the board going to, is the motion to approve grant applications for Two and authorize design for South Devon outside of the grant?
Yes, design and construction.
Yeah. So, I guess we should reword the, how was it drafted?
So, is it a resolution?
Yeah, all right. So, Jim, would you amend your motion for just the two, Glen Mary and Lancaster? And then we'll do a separate motion for Don's?
I'd like it included in the all-one resolution.
All right. Well, why don't you give amendment language?
Okay. So, an amendment that amend Resolution 201768 to indicate that the design and construction for the South Devon Road project would occur outside the grant application. That's sufficient for you, actionable for you, right?
Commissioner, could I, could I request, and maybe it's a point of order for Peter, so we have a price for design from Amy Kaminski, could we authorize that specifically tonight?
Yes.
So, that could get started?
Yes.
And then, we already know you're going to let us go to bid then.
Do you want to give us the price?
Commissioner Curley, I just, on the proposed legislation, it's Resolution 69, on the agenda 68, I think we need to figure out which is which.
I see what you mean. Okay.
I think it's...
69 is the Branbury Way.
Okay.
69 is the...
So, let's just be clear about what we're voting on here. We're voting on, contrary to what the resolution says, we're voting on engineering required for two, three sidewalk, sidewalk projects and then preparation of grant application for two sidewalk projects. And the, the one that's not included in the latter category is the South Devon. All right? Is that, everybody understands that?
I didn't understand, it doesn't mean it wasn't right.
Commissioner, could I make a suggestion that we authorize Gilmore Associates to do the engineering for the grant application for two sidewalk projects and to do the engineering for the South Devon, like, three different pieces?
Well, Don wanted to do them all together.
But I mean, it would be one resolution.
I just want the same resolution. I want the resolution that approves everyone's sidewalk to be the one resolution. I don't want a separate motion or a separate approval. So, however we do that, I'm...
All right. Would it help if we had this written down and come back to it and vote on it?
No, let's just do it. This is not that, this is not rocket science.
I think, I think, this is, so, they're talking, they're sideboring. But I think the resolution, as it is written, gives the staff the authority to do the engineering for those projects because the engineering is part of the, is part of the grant application, correct?
Well, as written, it's for four projects and for preparing a grant application for three, for all four, which we're not doing.
Right. And all we have to do, all we have to do is take the South Devon one out and say that that, that would be done outside of the grant. The amount of money is the same, the authorization is the same. The fact that there's that first sidewalk project is just, it just duplicates the approval that we made by motion at the last...
Don, why don't you articulate it so that...
So, amend 201768 to indicate that the South Devon project would occur this year outside of the grant application.
And then, I mean, it still says four sidewalks, so you're amending it to say four sidewalks and taking the South Devon out?
I think we really need to break this into an A and B.
It's very confusing.
I think it has to be written down.
Because what we're doing is we're authorizing the grant submission. I mean, that's what we're saying.
Of two of the sidewalks.
But only for two.
Right.
So, we line out the other two. And secondly, we are preparing the engineer, authorizing the preparation of engineering for the construction of the South Devon sidewalk.
Okay. So, how about this?
Can I interject here?
Sure.
We, we'll be coming back to you for the resolution for the grant application because at this time, we don't know the entire cost because we haven't designed it.
Yeah.
So, this particular resolution could be combined as two, if that's what you wanted to do, because we'll be coming back later on to get the formal resolution for just the DCEDMTF grant, if that helps at all. Or did I just make it worse?
So, you're saying just pass the engineering costs right now and not worry about the grant application?
Well, the, yeah, just passing that grant application is just to tell us that we can complete the application for you, meaning that it's almost like a purchase order to allow us to proceed with assisting you on that application. And then, as part of that...
All right. How about we simplify this and put forth a motion? I'm going to go ahead and move that we authorize the engineering and design costs for all three sidewalks, South Devon, Glen Mary, and Lancaster, and that we authorize the preparation, the beginning of the preparation for grant applications for Lancaster and Glen Mary. Okay?
Probably works just fine.
Okay. Is there a second?
And then, second. So, when we, we're still going to have, at the next meeting, Bill's going to have to come back with the amendment and it's at that point that we can fund the construction for this.
Right. Right. For the funding. This is separate.
All right. So, good job, Ling.
All right. Any more discussion on this? Please say no. Anybody in the public want to comment? All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Seven, nothing, it passes. All right. Next item, aye, nope, jay?
Yes. We are up to T and M Associates. This is a presentation from Mr. Duncan. He has updated cost figures for proposed options on the Branbury Way Stormwater Management Design Project. Good evening, Mr. Duncan.
Good evening. This evening, I'll be reviewing the flood mitigation strategies for Branbury Way as well as their associated costs, both directly related to stormwater as well as incidental costs related to utility relocation. Okay. First option, the essential boundary condition that we used for the development of this option was to avoid the need for easements. So, everything that you see proposed here in this concept, in this plan, is wholly within the township right-of-way. The, the aspect that was a challenge here was that the tie-in point to the existing storm sewer was essentially two feet higher than would be in Option Two, which would have, in Option Two, it would be required that we would need a easement to tie into the system where the invert of the storm sewer is a couple feet lower.
Can I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
To my fellow board members, this, are you, you're recapping what was presented last week at this point?
I was.
Yeah. In the interest of time, we have another hour and a lot more in our, do you feel you need another review of these options? No, I don't think we need to hear them again.
Okay.
All we need to hear are the new costs that you brought in. We all remember the three approaches.
Okay.
And let's just go through what, the costs that you are bringing, the new costs that you have put into your chart, and then we will pick our option.
Okay. In response to our meeting last week, we took a look at what the incidental costs would be related to essentially utility relocation as well as roadway reconstruction for each of the three options that we presented last week. So, Option One, we were, we're assessing approximately $140,000 would be needed to basically rebuild the sewer up at Windsor Avenue. And in Option Two, that cost would drop 282 because we would be extending improvements mid-block but not quite all the way up to the intersection of Farm and Windsor. And then, Alternative Three, we would be shortening the footprint of the, the overall improvements quite a bit more, which would still require about $45,000 worth of sanitary sewer replacements. For Option One, we would have an impact to the existing water costs, but the costs are provided. However, it's more common for Aqua, your water purveyor, to foot the costs for the right-of-way, but we did estimate costs for you just in case. So, Option One would require a pretty substantial replacement of water main along Windsor, so at $70,000 would be that figure. Option Two, again, we would be stopping mid-block on Windsor between essentially Branbury and Farm, so a $40,000 cost. And then, Option Three, we would be able to theoretically avoid any impact to the existing water main. Roadway costs would, of course, be the highest for Option One because it has the greatest footprint. So, we're looking at a cost of 425,000. Option Two, again, we're hemming in the footprint because we're taking advantage of an easement to the Klosky property or the Baskin Robbins property. So, the, the amount of overall impact to this, this neighborhood would be smaller, therefore the cost for roadway construction would be less at 325,000. And then, Option Three would provide the opportunity for the smallest construction footprint, which would give us an estimate of around 290,000. So, the total costs shown in the second to last column indicates essentially the pure costs of the stormwater improvements, including the modular block systems, the concrete vaults, the piping, the inlets, in addition to the, in addition to the utility relocations for sanitary water and the roadway restoration above the improvements. The costs range from 100, 1,335,000 down to 1 million, approximately 1 million.
I'm going to go ahead and move that we proceed with Option One. My reasoning, we'll go over a lot of this last meeting, I agree with Commissioner Curley that that is the most, the least complicated and will keep us on schedule in terms of ownership and those issues. It accomplishes the goals that we set forth. And it's...
Elaine, remember, last time you asked them to approach the landowners, talk about this, any sense of willingness to, two or three, to get these structures on their sites or was there any reach out to them or not?
Bob or Steve?
I believe we'll be setting up some of the meetings. I know Jennifer has reached out to the property owners. We have not had any kind of return calls, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to come up with the meetings for sure and I think we'll be able to come back to the board with some options for you to consider working with them.
I have two questions.
It'll be too late then, right?
I don't think so.
We also talked about other funds for, meaning the, the sanitary sewer fund, we wouldn't use the stormwater fund to pay for the new sewer, we wouldn't use the, or would we use the stormwater fund to pay for the new roads, correct? So, Steve, I recall that we talked about the ability to use other funds to reimburse that line item?
I guess, Commissioner, there's two schools of thought, one being, and the SWIMAC has brought this up, but, so, the project includes road restoration, sanitary sewer, so conceivably the whole project could be paid from the stormwater fund because all this is part of installing the stormwater. We could break out sanitary sewer and paving. I think there might be an argument for the sanitary sewer, but the, in my mind, the paving is part and parcel of the project, sir.
And we, how much did we budget? Is this, is Option One under budget?
No, it was 1.2 that we budgeted.
Yeah. And that was very early on based on, so when T and M first started, based on Dan's original RFP design, we were looking at the 1, 1.2 million dollar range. Now, that, we basically have had to go back to the drawing board to meet the criteria, you know, that's where we're at. And that does not include a contingency or anything like that, so most of our projects would have that. And so, that could bump that up. Am I correct, Greg, that does not include contingency? I didn't see the specific breakdown.
I think the estimates would include a contingency, so I feel as though the estimates that we provided are conservative.
Okay. All right. So, if we approved Option One like Elaine recommended, you know, the details of where we come out with the small amount of money would come up during the budgeting in the fall and then, then we could make a decision about whether we want to use sanitary sewer funds to reimburse the 150,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, all right, so I'm going to second the motion. My reasoning is it seems most consistent with the instructions that we have provided over the course of this project.
All right. Any other, Commissioner, comment?
Greg, could I ask you, you've had, in one of your earlier memorandums, you had a narrative and you had, you didn't call them options, you called them alternatives, one through seven.
Right.
Am I correct that the Option One that we're deliberating about now is equivalent to Alternative Six?
I believe so.
Yeah.
It's a series of the last three from the original seven, I believe.
Good.
Or now, Options One.
There are no easements required.
Correct.
Large storage under Windsor. And I'm sure you'll address, Mrs. Von Rossum, Ms. Von Rossum, the question of volume and retention and infiltration. We'll get to that in a minute.
Yes, I will.
So, large storage under Windsor Avenue does meet the 25-year storm goal that we set a long time back.
Correct.
We would relocate water and sewer, and that's sanitary sewer, isn't it?
Correct. Yes.
So, we get an added benefit there. I think, John, you, you'd like that idea of...
We know that increased attention's being paid to I and I, improvement.
Infiltration and...
What's the other I's?
Infiltrion?
Inflow and infiltration.
Inflow and infiltration.
In fact, later on tonight, I'm going to talk about a proposed ordinance that's been sent to us by RHM.
Okay. So, that...
So, we could do that at this time. I, I do believe that the sanitary sewer should pay for that, not the stormwater.
And, Mr. Duncan, what is the time, the construction time period for Option One? Is it the longest of the three?
The, the actual construction period would be a bit longer than Options Two and Three just because the, the area of disturbance isn't greater.
Okay.
And there's more structures.
And just, do you have an idea what that is at this point? Is it 12 months or 10 or...
It would be less than 12 months.
Less than 12. Okay.
What, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer to that?
Less than 12.
It would be less than 12 months.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Anybody from staff who'd like to make a comment or question?
Madam President? Just, just so the board, and again, I'm not trying to be wet towel or anything else that's part of this, but just so the board understands is with these projects, you know, what comes with this is when you have the sanitary line, the water line, the road, the board should consider this is a stormwater project. All of these come together as part of that package so that we, we don't try to fit a project in and then start parsing out to try to make it work to say, well, we're going to hit the sanitary fund for this or something else because we have so many sanitary, sanitary sewer projects that we don't start parsing out and then starting to hit that... that we don't start parsing out and then starting to hit that fund when we've got so many projects we have to fund to try to make it work within a project. I know maybe that sounds awkward, but we've got so many sanitary sewer projects. I understand what we're trying to do because we've got sanitary lines here we're trying to do as well, just so that we're aware of, you know, this project is being done primarily because it's a stormwater issue that we have to address so that we don't deplete other funds as we're trying to address a stormwater issue that we've got multiple issues in those funds too as well. That's all.
Okay.
Just trying to make everybody work.
Thanks, Bob. Any others?
Do we have a motion on?
There's a motion and a second for option one.
And does that bind the board irrevocably to go with option one? Here's why I'm asking. I put a notice out to my constituents about this program, and I didn't get many responses, oddly enough. But Steve Norzini and I talked about having a neighborhood meeting to educate everybody, and we did not have that. We did not have that.
Correct.
I'd like to try to have it Wednesday or Thursday of this week.
If, I mean, one of the reasons, we didn't know which way the board was going to, what direction the board would go in, so now we would know the affected area. It's basically, if option one is chosen, it's basically all of Windsor plus whatever's affected on Francis. So, I thought it was premature to meet with the neighbors when we didn't have...
Right. I think we decide, of course, of action and then go get the neighborhood.
Needless to say, all three of these options would cause disruption.
Yes. Well, and they're also, it's a reconfiguration of their traffic pattern because we're adding green space.
Yeah.
So, that will be something they're going to have to embrace.
Well, he needs, I think he should address that, Elaine. Green space infiltration.
Yeah, can, you want me to do that right now?
Yeah, can you do that quickly?
Sure. All right. So, the way that this project was kind of couched was that it was a flood issue. So, we addressed this based on it being a flood issue. However, intrinsically, in the development of the concept for this and what we executed in the preliminary plan was, there's a sizable green space here, area that we're adding as a result of reconfiguring the traffic pattern. And this is to be a rain garden, effectively. So, as part of our preliminary planning, we contracted advantage engineers to come out and do geotechnical evaluations, which included percolation tests. The results came back that the ground was favorable for infiltration. So, consequently, these modular block systems that we're proposing are to be open bottom to maximize the opportunity for infiltration of stormwater prior to the facility being used as a peak flow rate control facility.
Great. Thank you.
Does that require, on that slide, can you get it back there?
Oh, forward or this one?
The same one you had.
Okay.
Right where the green space is.
Oh, here, yeah.
Just north of that, that, is that a reconfiguration of Windsor Avenue?
No. The only reconfiguration will be, instead of the lane traveling through here, it will turn through here.
Well, that is, that is a reconfiguration.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have to take a hard right instead of...
That's, yeah, that's what I was saying before. The traffic pattern's been reconfigured as part of these improvements.
Good.
All right. Any other staff comment or Commissioner comment? Any public comment? All right, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor of proceeding with option one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
That passes six to nothing with one abstention. All right. Next item. You might want to...
Madam President, just real quick, over here, Bill. Just in terms of procedurally, we may need to amend the budget on that as well.
The stormwater budget?
Yes. So, would the board like to see that as two separate ordinances? If it has to be by ordinance or one that does the sidewalks and the stormwater together? Can I make a suggestion? I mean, this project, all you need is, they can proceed with the engineering on the old amount of money.
Absolutely.
And then, when we do the new budget, it can reflect. So, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to change the, we got to get away from the approving the whole thing at one shot into approving preliminary engineering, engineering, construction. So, I guess I'll leave it to you, but I think we can approve, we can proceed without amending the budget and just make that change in the new budget.
That is certainly the option. The benefit of amending is just, the entire project is funded, it's known, and we don't accidentally grab that money for something else, just...
I would defer to you on that. And if you, if we do have an amendment, I'd prefer that they're separate. I mean, I think that it's just keep...
All right, well, okay. Let me, I'll think about it more and then...
Either way, we'll be fine with me, Bill.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, the next item, Jim?
Yes, okay. We finished J, and we have a resolution on J that's been passed.
Yes, sorry, K.
Okay, now we're going up to K, 2017-69, against Mr. Duncan's firm authorizing the payment to T&amp;M Associates for additional services for the Branbury Way stormwater management design.
This is just paying for what we are, have just passed.
Yeah.
Correct. So, if I may, Commissioners, so we did, the original problem was, the design that's put forth in the RFP by Dan could not meet the criteria. We did meet and have a brainstorming meeting on this, Greg, myself, a cast of others, and we did come up with a list of items to look at. And so, basically, I'll cut to the nutshell. T&amp;M Associates took it upon themselves, they did at their own risk, they did the analysis required for this to try to keep the project moving. So, if you look at the last page from the letter penned by Russ Benner, the additional fees were the actual effort used by T&amp;M and not an estimate. We understand we performed the additional work at our risk. We did this to keep the project moving forward. I spoke to Russ Benner and said, why would you do this without talking to me? That's a change order. They understood that, they did this to try to keep things rolling. So, they had come to me with this, and I said, you know, obviously, an amount of this size, I would go to the board. The work was completed, the process was not followed. You know, the process would be, here's a change order request, I would come to the board. So, my thought would be, conceivably, the board would have approved this had it been done in the proper procedure, but this is now after the fact.
Thank you, Steve. I'd like to move for the passage of resolution 2017-68.
I'll second it.
So, sorry, that was wrong. 2017-69, authorizing payment.
I'll second it.
Any Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes seven to nothing.
The next item is L, 941 Academy.
Six O, I'm sorry, six O with Don Curley not present.
Got it. This is 941 Academy Lane requesting a waiver from Section 245 of our subdivision and land development code, ordinance rather, regarding stormwater. And I think the homeowner or the applicant is here. Introduce yourselves.
My name is Jack Robinson, I'm the engineer for the site and Fred Abrams, owner of 941 Academy Lane.
Okay, you can give us the background. What's going on here?
I'll be as brief as I can. We had written a letter to Mr. Roger Phillips. I don't know if you've all received that, not in your packets. Had a chance to look at it. I can just give a little summary of it. We have a unique situation here. I was the engineer, just to give some quick background, with Ingram, working with Ingram Engineering Services back in 2005 through 2007, 2008 on this lot and the adjoining lot. I actually, since then, I've owned my own firm now the last six years, but having the history of this project, we've recollaborated to follow this project through. So, that's why you see in the letter, there's Ingram Engineering and my firm, JMR Engineering. Just to give you some quick background, I'll show you. This property, this property was, it's an older subdivision, there's, it's known as Lot Seven and Lot Nine. This is Lot Seven in the front, Lot Nine into the rear. It actually had only one home on it, very large home with a pool, a lot of impervious area with a man-made pond in the front. That pond was historically the stormwater for this site. The property was subdivided, like I said, years ago. Fast forward, the rear lot, which is actually off the page here, which is Lot Nine, that was approved, I think, in '07 or so. It was constructed upon and built, well, within the last 10 years, that house was built.
You tell, what is the nearest arterial road to the properties?
Academy Lane, yes, and Academy Lane connects to Brinmore Avenue, correct.
This is Fifth Ward?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a low-density district. So, the prior dwelling that was there before with all of its impervious was over 14,000 square feet of impervious. Over 12,000 was removed years back, and the rear house was built with Lot Nine. And the impervious was divided up between the two lots. The rear lot got more of the impervious because it has the driveway and there was a larger lot. The front lot, the subject lot that we're talking about, was allocated only 5,000 square feet of the total 12,000-plus that was removed. Through the years, 2008, that plant, the plan for Lot Seven, the subject lot, was approved in 2008 with shade tree, went through everything. It was approved for 5,000 square feet of impervious. Since then, as everybody knows, the economy kind of failed. We had, you know, everything, there was a recession. This lot had sat dormant. The permit was good, believe it or not, until January this year. And if had this lot gone into construction through January this year, we wouldn't even be here tonight. What happened was, in February, one month after the permit, the original permit for this lot had expired, Fred had come to acquire this lot and actually want to build on it. When we go back and find, we later found out then that the permit had been expired in January. So, when we decided to resubmit the grading plan, the 5,000 square feet of impervious that we had allocated to this lot is no longer interpreted as allocated to this lot. It was, this, like I said, this lot was approved in 2008, which is the most recent ordinance, it's the '05 ordinance is the most recent ordinance. But back then, you could get credit for impervious, and now you, now it's interpreted differently. The reason that we're here before you tonight, though, is that retrofit this particular lot for stormwater is very difficult. It's a very small footprint. If I can show you, my finger kind of, these are actually some slopes that are relatively steeper. However, this is your building footprint area. This lot also has a septic system. And there's really, the constraints, the other constraint would be is the pond in the front. We do see a possible opportunity for some stormwater on the north side of the property, and that was what we were proposing. What we're proposing to do is continue the man-made pond in the front. Like I said, with that, there is historical, historically, stormwater for this site in the front. We, what we were proposing is to add a small recharge bed to the north, which is really all there is. This lot is slopes from back to front, so actually, there's going to be a walkout in the front, which is a little unique, but there's going to be a walkout condition in the front because of the constraints here. As I said before, there was 5,000 square feet attributed to this lot. The builder is only proposing less than 4,000 square feet of impervious.
May I ask you a question? So, Roger, looking for relief from the numeric requirement of peak rate and volume, what is it that they're looking for?
Yes, they're looking for relief from the peak rate, the water quality.
And so, this is different than all the other waivers that we have?
Correct.
Which are, which I have always, I have approved them all because they haven't perked, which this is not. This is, we have regulations and it's, I mean, essentially, what I'm hearing is it's a hardship, but I don't see myself inclined to provide relief because it's a hardship.
Well, yes, I mean, let me explain a little bit further. As I mentioned, the pond in the front is an existing stormwater amenity, but we can't count that because it exists.
Yeah, I, okay, great.
And what we're proposing, like I said, if we had, this was going into construction a matter even a few months ago, we wouldn't even be here because it was approved.
Did you say that your, this was just acquired in February?
Yes.
Okay, so that, all of that permitting happened with a prior owner?
It did. There was numerous people that approached this lot. But what we are proposing to do is add a recharge component. That pond in front doesn't off, as you, as you know, Mr. Curley, does not offer recharge. It's just, it's a volume, well, I should say, a peak rate design for a pond. We would propose a recharge, which would be a volume credit along the side of the house, which was never proposed before. The idea is, though, we cannot meet the township's requirement for, of the full 100-year storm volume. That is impossible for this site. We are using a smaller building footprint than originally approved, under 4,000, not a full 5,000 square foot of impervious proposed here. But if we couldn't get a waiver here, this lot would be unbuildable, effectively. It's very difficult to build as it is, I will say. The slopes on this site is, and it's hard to tell, but these are all contours coming down.
Why not use a 2,000 square foot footprint then?
The footprint actually is 2,000, a little over 2,000. You have the driveway, you have a portion of the drive, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of including everything. The total, I think we actually have proposed is more like 35,000.
My point is, is there's some number that you can get it to if you make it small enough, small enough house?
I would say it would be very difficult because of the slopes that we have here. I don't believe there is.
I need just a little clarity on the reason why you are asking for this raise. Is it, is it physically impossible to do this, or is it just economically not?
It's physically impossible to build a house and install stormwater that would handle the entire 100-year storm like the ordinance usually requires. However, like I was saying, we have a credit for this lot, and that's based upon the fact that there was a lot more impervious on this property at one point and the fact that there is...
You have a credit or you had a credit?
We had a, well, we had a credit.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's relevant at this point.
Well, yeah, I think that was, the understanding here is that there was a pond in the front of this property, and it's still there today, it still functions, and that was the point of that pond, to handle stormwater. We're proposing something even in addition to that. But to ignore the pond altogether and start from scratch as if nothing ever existed on this site is really impossible.
Well, I'm sure you sat through this meeting and you heard the inordinate amount of time we spend trying to figure out what to do with our stormwater issues. And so, you can understand why we are not anxious to grant waivers for stormwater management.
I understand.
And why we have these regulations in our ordinance to begin with so that we stop, we start righting the wrong.
I understand.
And in the, and as Don, as Commissioner Curley said, in the instances where we have granted the waivers, it's because of the, just complete inability to infiltrate. In a situation where it is possible to put the sewer and water management here, it's just probably not at the ratio that you, you know, have proposed. I mean, I think...
Well, I think he's struggling with steep slopes.
We understand it's very unique, it's different reasons, yes. I mean, correct, sir. We're struggling with the slopes and the fact that the building footprint area is very small. Like I said, this is a septic system lot on top of it, so we even have to deal with that. I know in Radnor, you don't see too many septic systems, mostly public. This is a very unique case, and I'm fully aware, I've worked in Radnor for many years, and I have four other projects there now, and they all have lots of stormwater on them. This is very unique in its nature. And I wouldn't propose this if I didn't feel confident in the way it's designed and with the large amount of impervious that was on this property at one point. And the fact that there's a large man-made pond out front, which was designed much larger than it ever needed to be. It was more of an amenity. For this reason, I feel very confident.
If you could get legal credit for that front yard pond, you would not need this waiver?
I think we still would, to achieve the recharge amount, but that's why we're proposing a stormwater bed. It's just that to achieve the ordinance level of recharge is difficult on this site due to the slopes.
But wait, is it due to the slopes? Or it seems that you could comply by putting in additional infiltration? And it's just cost prohibitive?
It's not.
As I understand it, you're asking us to just waive the applicability of the stormwater ordinance to this site? Not that it doesn't perk, just waive it because you don't think you should have to do it?
No, sir, it's not cost prohibitive, yes. That is not our issue. Trust me, that spending hours at meetings and writing a letter to waive a request was not something, I could have spent that time designing something, to be honest. That's not what I, that's not my intention here. I know what's feasible on this site and what's not.
Can we have an opinion from Roger on this? Have you... Have you assessed the feasibility of putting stormwater in that site?
I have not assessed the feasibility of putting stormwater on this site. I've worked with the gentleman to try to come up with somewhat of a solution, but again, this is, they cannot meet the numbers in the ordinance that the ordinance requires on this site. So, I don't have the ability to approve that on my own. It has to come in front of you because they cannot meet those levels of the ordinance. This did, as they said, this did have a valid grading permit that had they gone to construction in December of 16, they'd be under construction and building what was approved in 2008.
But under our old regs.
But now that that permit expired, it was determined that they had to go through the entire process again with a grading permit and conform the stormwater.
And it's not necessarily the old regs, it's the same ordinance, it's just that it's being, it's interpreted different today, and I understand that. What we are proposing is out of the ordinance, though. It's when the ordinance requires, Section 245-22-A, 2B, requires recharge at the first inch of runoff, and that's what we're proposing. And your ordinance allows for that when you do have problems, whether it be poor soils or, in our case, steep slopes. So, we're proposing to adhere to that ordinance, we just can't go greater than that. So, we are trying to adhere to the ordinance to the extent feasible. I want you to understand that for sure.
So, we don't have any proposed resolution in our, on the agenda? Is this, where are we on the timeline?
There is no timeline.
I mean, I think we make a decision tonight. I respect your predicament, I just don't see, I don't think it's our place to waive the ordinance for the reasons that you've identified. I recognize it's a hardship for you, but it's just, it's not my hardship. I have, there's a reason why we have the numeric criteria. For me, there are conditions that I am willing to waive the one particular, but it doesn't seem applicable here. So, my inclination is to reject the request at this point.
All right, before I go in that direction, could you paint a word picture of the nature and extent of your stormwater controls, infiltration, retention, so that I can get an idea of how bad this is or how good it is?
Right. Well, the controls that are out there today consist of that manmade pond that you see in the front. The manmade pond is almost as big as the area that you could build the house, the entire yard. It's a substantial pond with over 8,000 cubic feet of storage, 8,000 cubic feet. The rest of the lot is steeply sloped with challenges. This lot is so challenged that it even has an easement on the adjoining lot for a septic system short its system fail. It's a difficult lot, and it's been difficult for me over 10 years now, 13 years, to be exact. I never thought I would have to come here to this point because we had a permit, and now I'm back to square one.
With regard to the buildable area, you'll have runoff. You have the house, the roof, the driveway, is all that going to be retained on the property?
Yes, well, we would, yes, in that we would connect the entire roof leaders to this recharge bed and collect the first inch of runoff.
Is that the recharge bed the same as the pond, or is that different?
Stormwater, no, that would be in addition to the pond. That would be a recharge bed that we would construct the north side of the house.
And what are the dimensions of the recharge pond?
The infiltration bed, I roughly did some numbers. Because of the slope, it would, you know, we try to make it narrower, so we probably, it might be anywhere from 10 feet wide to 30 feet long, three feet deep in stone.
Okay, and what are the dimensions of the pond?
The pond is more, well, you can see it's triangular shaped, but the average width is about 30 to 40 feet, and the length is over 120 feet. And I just want to stress, we are asking for, asking to adhere to a certain section of the ordinance. I'm not asking to waive the entire ordinance. We're asking to adhere to a provision in your ordinance that allows you to drop down to a one-inch runoff, if that makes sense.
All right, is there anyone that would like to make a motion to grant that request?
I would like to move that we grant this waiver.
Is there a second?
Luke, one second, just to get a discussion.
I think it fails for lack of a second.
No, well, I mean, it's, every rule, our rules are... Properly passed, but for every rule, there's an exception. And here, I think the fact that they have a pond with 8,000 cubic feet of storage capacity, a recharge bed of 10 by 30 by 3, I think we're being excessively rigid in applying our laws if we deny this.
I'm going to, if it's okay, I'll tell you sort of, because I'm open to that, Jim, I really am. You know, like, I want to be practical. In this situation, though, in the other ones that we approve, it's the conditions that God made the land 400 years ago that are what we're waiving. Like, the perk of the land is nothing that anyone had any control over. In this scenario, it's largely a problem because of how the lot was defined, meaning it's too small to build because it runs into all these, because it has all these conditions, and it just became, it's a problematic lot to build. So, for me, it's different than those other waivers that we've talked about that I have approved or recommended approving.
All right, I'm afraid, I think we need to move on.
Did we get the dimensions of the lot? Did you give us that?
The lot is 183 feet wide by 280 feet deep, roughly.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of reason here to grant this. There's lots of ground.
I'd like to just say one thing, the configuration of the lot...
Could you stand closer to the microphone, please?
The front of the lot slopes down, okay? Then you have the pond, and then it slopes up again. So, everything that's going, all the rain that's coming, forget about, I mean, the recharge, but everything is going, is graded into the pond, which is also part of the Derby Creek. It actually, it's not a stationary pond, it's actually, Derby Creek feeds into it, so...
I think I want to clarify something Mr. Curly was saying as well, and we run into this all the time as engineers, where we see soils that don't perk, and that is also God made. In this case, it's similar. I mean, these slopes were not, some, I would say, most of these slopes in this lot were not made by man. And this lot was created, yes, the lot was created by man, but when we create lots around areas of bad soils, that's also manmade. So, it's kind of the same thing in that regard.
Okay, well, I'm afraid the motion failed for lack of a second, so you will not be getting your relief tonight. And I hope that you continue to work with our staff to try and come up with a solution to... Yeah, where you can...
I think this lot was dead in the water, to be honest, then, if that's the case, unfortunately.
Well, thank you for coming in. Our next item is M. Do you want to take that?
This is a subdivision land development ordinance, application 2016 S15. It's a caucus only, so there'll be no votes. And this is the Cambria Court, two lots, and a change in a lot line. And we have the applicant here.
Commissioner Higgins, if I could just add very quickly, our last Shade Tree Commission was canceled, but we did not want to stop the applicants from coming for caucus. They are on for this Wednesday night when we rescheduled, so Wednesday night goes Shade Tree. If there's any changes or requested changes, you'll see them when they come back for final.
So, my first question before you even present is, have, given the history of how this all started, have you resolved the conflicts, I don't want to call them conflicts, the discussions that you have had with the neighbors on this property?
Yeah, I believe we have, yep.
Okay, now, we have some neighbors here tonight, who are going to probably make some comments.
My friends back there.
Yes. So, in giving us a brief summation of what you're presenting, please pay special attention to the agreements or whatever you have come to agree to with the neighbors.
Okay, so I'm Matt Lombardi, I'm the owner of 106 and 110 Cambria Court. I bought this property, I think it was last fall. We've since, both homes on the property, the two properties have been condemned by the township at the time that we purchased them. The larger house, we've since knocked down, that Joe's pointing to right now. We've knocked that down, we've stabilized the soil, and we're trying to, we got the approval to subdivide at the zoning hearing. We asked for a couple waivers, which were sidewalks and streetlights, because the cul-de-sac does not have any sidewalks and streetlights right now. So, instead of having a sidewalk to nowhere, it seemed like the neighbors kind of agreed and they wanted that. We've met with the neighbors, we've talked about the architectural detail of the homes, and I think we've satisfied everybody without respect to landscaping yet, but as we've said, we haven't gone to Shade Tree until Wednesday.
So, the waivers that you're asking for are primarily revolve around right-of-way, sidewalk, and lighting? Those are the three issues?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we meet all setbacks, lot square footage.
Wait, it doesn't meet the setbacks, right? Setbacks are required to be greater for a subdivision?
It meets all setbacks.
What does it mean that requesting relief from the right-of-way, then?
Your ordinance gives the option of the board to request additional right-of-way on any street that doesn't have, that doesn't meet the right-of-way criteria in your ordinance, such as this, but nowhere along the other parts of this street is there additional right-of-way, other than the, I believe, 33, Joe? What is?
That's 22.
22. So, your ordinance gives you the option to take additional right-of-way and to have the roadway widened to meet certain criteria in your ordinance. In discussions with staff, we felt that at least the roadway widening here would not be appropriate because it would be different than the rest of the cul-de-sac.
And then the sidewalk waiver is just to not have sidewalks or to not have sidewalks on portions of it?
Yes, again, that gives the board the option to require sidewalks. There are no sidewalks anywhere on this.
And then the lighting one, is there's a lighting requirement in...
Correct, there's no lights on the streets.
Does the community want lighting, or do they not want lighting?
In the discussions I've had with all the neighbors, they didn't want sidewalks and they did not want lighting. So, we basically said we would do whatever the census was on the block, and that's what they told us, that's what we're doing.
And in regard to the right-of-way, the roadway ends in a cul-de-sac, it's, you know, there's no improvements to continue the road on in any way. So, we think that the right-of-way issue is a moot point.
Well, so, here's the request. You're saying that you want to ignore the setback requirement. When you do a subdivision, you'd have, what's the number, 40 feet? And you only have 28, or is it 60 and you only have?
I'm sorry, we have 40-foot of right-of-way.
And you need to have 60?
And we need 60, correct.
And Roger tells us we can require you to provide additional right-of-way elsewhere, and you're saying there's no place to do it, so forget about it?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if, it doesn't make sense to have a 60-foot right-of-way on a dead-end street.
All right, but in the final analysis, you want us to ignore the setback requirement? You want us to ignore the lighting requirement, and you want us to ignore the sidewalk requirement?
No, I want you to consider a waiver for, I guess, burdensome regulations, and I think we have met the requirements of the residents of the area, and engineering-wise, we don't see a reason for them.
Roger, I need to follow up a little bit on how you describe it. So, what I interpreted from you is that it, they're not, it isn't that there's a numeric requirement and they're not meeting it, it's that there is authority for us to require more if we choose to require more. And the waiver is we are choosing not to require more. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
I hear that is different. The requirement is 60 feet setback, they're not meeting that, correct?
Mr. Booker, it's not a setback we're referring to, it's a right-of-way width.
All right, this right-of-way is required to be 60 feet, correct? For a subdivision, and it's not 60 feet?
And that's sort of what I, is it that the right-of-way is required to be 60 feet, or is it that the right-of-way is required to be up to 60 feet? Because I'm hearing it, I'm hearing Rich describe it one way, I'm hearing you describe it another.
Well, and I think this is typically a waiver request that we grant quite often.
My recollection is that it's more of the way I described it as, up to a certain amount. It's not inherently non-compliant, it just gives us the capability to...
Exactly. And in the cases where we do try to proactively take that extra right-of-way, it's because we have a reason, perhaps aside, you know, we want a bigger right-of-way, or we want to widen the road, or we want a trail going in there, or we want to do stormwater management there.
Yeah, I had the Benson Properties, I think we did take more right-of-way, but that's a main thoroughfare.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this is, what possible reason in the future would we need for 60 feet? Roger, any idea?
No, I don't see any, unless you were going to take that through the entire, all of the properties on the street.
Okay, I, in the interest of time, would like to invite anybody who's here from the public, if they would like to come up and make comments at this point.
Now, here's the difference. 60 feet is the right-of-way in many different locations, including my street, which will never need it. The issue here is if they were building on the same lot without a subdivision, and they were requesting the relief, putting a house there, it would make sense. In this case, they are asking to increase the density. In so doing, they need to conform with the right-of-way requirement, they're not doing it. That's the difference. They're not just rebuilding the house, they took a large lot, they had one house, they're making it now two houses on there. That's the difference, that's why we need to require the 60 feet.
Okay.
Well, can I offer a suggestion? If for some reason in the future you need more right-of-way, you could work with the property owner, get an easement, or you have the right to condemn the property and take whatever additional right-of-way you need.
But then you would be violating setback.
Well, then, I mean, then you also...
Why not just build it with 60 feet right-of-way?
Can I add something to the discussion here? Just reading the code, it says, "Where a subdivision of butts or contains an existing street of inadequate right-of-way width, the Board of Commissioners may require the reservation or dedication of right-of-way to conform to the above standards." That's the waiver that's in front of you right now, is asking you to make that decision of whether you want that additional right-of-way or not.
Yeah, this is what the waiver that George Brosman always says, "I don't have to ask for this waiver, but I'm doing it anyway."
Correct, correct.
Yes. It is. Okay, we're going to hear from the neighbors at this point?
Been here for three hours.
Good times, anyway.
Somebody want to extend the meeting?
Do I need to say who I am?
Someone, my motion for, let's say 15 minutes. Till 11:15.
Motion to extend the meeting to 11:10.
Say 11:15, we have three more matters.
Second, I'll second 15.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Five to two. Go ahead.
Sheila Palmer, 115 Cambria Court, this is Jim Carino, he's 114 Cambria Court, and David Kainoff is back there, 123. Yeah, we've been through all of this, we've discussed this with Mr. Lombardi. I mean, right off the bat, I'll just say, you know, there is some concern overall with regard to the amount of development that's going on, that's being cramming in onto space as properties are becoming purchased by other properties. What we'd like to do, and we've discussed with Mr. Lombardi, and back and forth, you guys are on this whole right-of-way thing, we want these properties to obviously still fit within the context of the neighborhood in terms of the historical look. We've had conversations with Mr. Lombardi about this that have gone... conversations with Mr. Lombardi about this, that have gone very well. Initially, he proposed having garages up front, and the two properties facing each other, after we discussed as a neighborhood with him, he's just, he's agreed to reorient the proposed properties to face the street, and the garages will be in the back of the property, along with giving us copies of the elevations associated with the new orientation. We've also talked about design elements for one oh-six and the, the new house, which will be one oh-eight, not using vinyl, using plaqueboard instead, installing windows with thick mullions. He's talked about planting initially six-foot trees to, we've asked that he replace with ten-foot trees to restore the canopy that will be lost from some mature trees that'll be taken down, and that shade tree commission has not happened yet. And to encourage future sale of the finished homes, to plant trees and evergreens along the back property line that abuts the businesses that face Route thirty. We'd also like one oh-six and one oh-eight to be built at the same time. Also, we'd liked, in agreement, and we'd like all this actually in a written document, we have an attorney that we're working with to, to do that, that, that this is, that we get a revised plan that has the new orientation of all of this, as well as the elevations, I think you gave us just some real sort of teeny stuff early on, and we've, we've seen the landscaping plan, but we haven't seen the whole kit and caboodle plan. And that, there's an agreement that this plan, you know, survives, if at some point that Mr. Lombardi decides that he wants to abandon this particular project, my understanding is that the plan sort of lives within the township, is that correct? And that, that if somebody wanted to develop the property after, they'd have to live by that plan as well? Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, I, I just...
Necessarily the agreements, I'm not sure, that you have between...
And, and all those items, Sheila and Jim, none of those are going to be enforceable by the township.
Right, that's a, that's a side agreement.
So, so whatever happens, if, say he defaults on it, any provision of it, you're gonna come to the township, hey, he, he said he was gonna do this, you need to make him, we won't be able to do that.
Okay, well, we were not led to believe that, so this is new information. Everything that Sheila has discussed this evening, we've discussed with Matt, and we believe we have verbal agreement, and our intent was to memorialize that in a survivable document.
And you can, and you can have, come to whatever agreement you like.
We can, we can make those private covenants a condition of our approval.
Well, yes, that this would be a condition to your approval, that was something that we discussed.
So forget the private agreement.
We went through this before, and I think we chose not to, didn't we?
Well, I, I don't know what you went through before, in a previous development, but I would caution the board in placing conditions on your approval that are really private agreements between the, the property owners.
Well, why not? Because it looks to me, it looks to me like you guys want to give these right-of-ways anyway, so what is it that, that we have as the people that have been living there?
So, one of the things, so, one of the things is that, that you come up with a list, some of those things are land development items that we can get in as a note on the plan, some of them are not, like the material that they would use would not be a, a condition, but some of those things, so if you get us that list, we can go through it, correct, Peter?
Yes.
We can go through it, we can identify which aspects of it are land development, and we can make those notes on the plan, and then they will, would be enforceable by the township.
Or you make, we, we put them in the resolution approving it, and make it a condition of approval. Now, you, you've stated you have your own attorney, correct?
Well, we've, we've discussed this with an attorney, we haven't started writing anything, we've just talked about it.
I mean, there are ways to, to have these things survive, that, if you, if, to, to pass on from owner to owner, and so you need to discuss that with your attorney on how to ensure that if the current owners of these property decides to sell this land without developing it, and sells it to a new developer, that these conditions will run with the land and not just be personal to this particular developer. But that's something, that's a, that's something that you and your attorney needs to discuss with Mr. Lombardi and, and work out that deal yourself.
And also, not all the items that you talked about are going to be land development items, several of these items are going to be personal agreements between the neighbors and the developer, and certain of them will not be enforceable as part of a covenant or a deed, something that you put into a, a deed as well. So, I would, I would recommend against these types of things, and, because I think what I've seen in the past is, the neighbors will be disappointed with the follow-through when the inevitable disagreement occurs.
Just so that I'm level-set, to create a picture here, for example, Rich, the garages toward the back of the house is the condition of what you're approving, would that have to remain?
I would do that as, as able to be a condition of land development.
Yes.
The placement of the garage, the orientation of the garage.
That could be a condition.
So, I mean, if, if you get, if you get the list, we can get the list reviewed, we can get you a sense of which of your requirements are land development.
Our intent is not to be onerous and to dictate how these homes look. The initial drawings, which Matt has acknowledged, were really not representative of what he wanted. You know, they looked to us, they had a garage in the front of the house, they were longitudinal. You know, the new configuration is a front-facing home, which we agree with, the garage in the back is good, we've made some suggestions in terms of the type of materials that are used, but we're not architects. There are some things that are very important to us, and thank you, Don, for reacting to, we need to know what's enforceable, not enforceable, the attorney that we're planning on, that we've, I think we've hired, has worked in this township before, so we're gonna rely on that expertise as well.
Also, I thought that the main issue with the neighbors was the additional density.
Yeah, it's a main, it's a significant issue, but if we, you know, we've taken two properties, and now we're making them three, and that's a big issue, but we're trying to be pragmatic here, we're trying, we've been counseled to collaborate, to work with the township, and, by a lot of people, and so we're trying to make the best of a situation that works for everyone. I have, I have real personal concerns about what's happening in Radnor Township, and how all these longitudinal homes could go up throughout the township, it's a big issue for me, but if we can solve this in a compromise, you know, that's, that's what we've come to, but if we can't get assurances, we may want to go back the other way.
Okay, so I'm gonna make this suggestion.
Well, again, you gotta get the list, you know, again, let's go through, get every single item, and then let's talk about it, this is caucus right now, so...
I'm gonna make, make a suggestion, with your attorney, you delineate all of the items, work with the landowner, and with our township, to come up with what we can incorporate as a condition, and to the landowner, I'm going to suggest that before you come in here for preliminary, you make sure that you've reached agreement with this, these parties, so that we don't have them standing up and objecting.
I, I would also suggest that we do not have a preliminary final, we need a preliminary and final plan in this case.
Okay.
This is final, so this is caucus, final for caucus, caucus for final?
Caucus for final, so...
And the next meeting would be, maybe here for approval.
So, I, again...
Wait, when, when did we have the preliminary?
This meets the criteria for a minor final subdivision, as, as defined in the ordinance.
Okay, so that is my advice, and if, I think with the, we would run into problems if we have not have, had these issues resolved before coming in for final. Okay? All right?
Who do we talk to when you say, obviously, we, we know we're talking with these guys, but as far as working with somebody from the township?
Here, talk, talk to me, I'll, I'll coordinate this.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, the final item is, no, we're finished.
Well, not exactly, we have a remainder item from the consent agenda, E, authorization to go out to bid for the repair of the concrete wall at Radnor Chester Road and King of Prussia Road.
Can we, can we table that, can we just do the...
Is that time-sensitive?
What? No, we need, we need that.
Let's just do the...
Okay, so we have two time-sensitive items that we do need to address before we close out tonight, and that is N, and the waiver of the, the ZHB application, which is set for the next meeting. So first, let's do N, and then we will get to the zoning. And John Nagel, it's Parks and Recreation issue.
A motion, I make a motion to reject the proposals for the RFPs, for Professional Operating Business Plan Development, the Willows Mansion, and authorizing that we re-advertise RFPs for the same.
Second.
So, any commissioner comment?
Why? I, I just didn't see the logic of why.
Why did Luke second it?
Perhaps you can give us a short explanation, Bob?
Sure, the process became flawed, and because of that, I'm asking that the bids be cut, be rejected, the proposals be rejected, and we rebid the process.
What, what's the flaw?
When there's direct contact to the commissioners, which circumvents the proposal process, it becomes flawed.
So, Peter, is that a flaw? I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you, Bob, I just want to know if, if it's a flaw.
Well, I have not seen the original RFP, the, the request that was sent out, but generally speaking, yeah, if you're, if you're gonna try to undertake an RFP process where you're trying to make it a level playing field for everyone submitting, submitting their proposals, and then someone circumvents that process, it might not be a legal issue, but certainly it, it, there is an, an air of unfairness to it.
Was it reciprocated, meaning, I don't remember the particulars of, the, was, what, what was the request, was it for more time, or something like that?
Correct.
And so was it reciprocated, was it, did anyone provide, it just seemed like a harmless request for more time to me? Was it? Okay.
How, how many proposals did we receive?
There were two that had come in.
And one of those bidders, or prospective offerors, contacted a commissioner?
No, a third.
The entire board.
A third, a third did. Two came in, and then a third bidding party contacted board members.
Why, why should that contaminate things? That, that party is not...
Think about that this logically, if, if bidder number one, who doesn't get the bid, finds out later that bidder number three, who did get the bid, had constant conversations with board members in putting together their bid, it's not a fair process.
Bidder number three, in her example, bidder number three was in the, in the mix, were, they were bidding.
Yes, asking, they were asking to submit a bid. Mm-hmm. So, all right.
Shame, because the people, number, numbers one and two, that did it legitimately, spent time and money.
Well, and they will resubmit their bids, so, it, we're, they're, and they'll probably resubmit the exact same bid.
But wait, now, now, now you, to fix it, though, you have to give everybody the same information as bidder three, don't you?
Well, and, and bidder number three did not get any information, she, that, that person just...
Well, then it's not contaminated, then we could just move on.
Well, the process is...
It is.
Okay, anyway.
Well, it's not funny, so I take objection to that, so it's, it's not...
Is there any other comment?
It is tainted, and in the, in purchasing process and proposal process, you want a transparent process, so people have the same level playing field, so there's no access to the deciding board, and there's no undue influence upon that, so when you have transparency and a clean process, you don't want to have that process tainted. So, this is the cleanest way to do that, is to be able to do this and give a level playing field for everyone.
Is there any other staff comment?
Just one more comment, so what, what is the unlevel part, if they didn't get anything?
So, when you have the ability, when someone can reach out and have direct contact to the Board of Commissioners, can you say that that was not influence, influential to you, but to the general public or to the other bidders, that they had access to you?
Okay, I'm agreeing with you, Bob, so I'm saying, we need to give that to one and two, then.
You would have to say that this, yeah, you'd have to say, here was what was given to the other Board of Commissioners. That's your call. You don't like that.
If we didn't give, if there's nothing happened, then it's, it's okay, but if something did, then we need to give it to the others to fix it.
Is there any other staff comment or public comment? I'm gonna call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes seven to nothing, and then our last item that we will deal with tonight is a discussion and possible motion regarding Aldwin Lane, requested by Commissioner R, and Commissioner R, do you want to go through these three items?
Sure, I'd be glad to, thank you. Thank you, okay, I'll be brief, this is to provide extra relief for residents on the north side of Aldwin Lane, whose properties abut the R-100 line, and across that, the new Villanova West Lancaster lot. They had previously a darkened forest behind there, all those trees were removed, and a parking lot was placed up, surface lot, with lighting, the lighting was determined to be within the codes of the, of the township, however Villanova has, as a neighbor, to do two things, extend the shielding that was on those lights, and also to frost them, to cut down on the glare that was coming through. But in addition to that, the neighbors still wanted some extra relief, and by the way of having variance to have eight-foot fences in their backyard only. That would allow them to kind of block out the, the lighting and any construction that was behind there, from the parking lots, and, and I support that. So in any event, what has happened is, is that we're having a motion for three things, one is to waive the township's fee for the zoning hearing board application, support them in that way, two is a system and filling out a joint application for variance for the five residents who've requested, requested this variance, and allow the township to support them with a, to provide an aerial plan that would serve as a site survey for presentation to the zoning hearing board, and lastly, that we request that the township provide support for this variance at the zoning hearing board for their request.
I second the motion. Is there any other commissioner comment about this?
Phil, I support this, except for one aspect I'd like to be very clear on, if it turns out that they're the only folks in front of zoning hearing board, I, I wouldn't agree to that, I would say that they have to present when there's something else on the agenda, because we're bringing the lawyer in, you know, there are costs associated with the zoning hearing board.
I don't know what the schedule would be.
Well, we can work that out.
I know, I, I... You know, we're trying to get...
You don't need this fence next week.
Uh, no, but people did want to put it up for the summertime, and this would allow this to go into the June thing, of course, in, in...
It's gotta be a month in advance.
I'm sorry?
You have to file a month in advance.
That's right, we would, we would end up filing it by the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
Kevin will know off the top of his head whether something's coming in.
Well, he may or may not, at this point.
I mean, that's my only concern.
I understand that.
I'm willing to waive the fees, but not if they're the only ones.
Well, this allows them to do something in the summertime, I presume that they would have some, some variances on there.
Also, the lighting was not in compliance, was my recollection, it was not in compliance in that there was certain requirements to make it come within compliance.
Well, can I, can I speak to that for you? The, we had the, an independent lighting assessment being done at a December lighting inspection for there, and the independent inspector had proposed that this was not in compliance with our code, that is correct. However, in a meeting with John Rice, and Steve Larceny was there, he can speak to it, and Villanova, it was determined by our solicitor that they were in compliance with our code. Now, in addition to that...
Just so, so the solicitor overruled the independent engineering inspector?
Steve, will you want to speak to that, and what had happened at that meeting?
I mean, we may as well make it clear.
So, based on our, based on the original land development review, they were in compliance, and when we brought in a, a different consultant, a specialist, if you will, they determined, according to their opinion, they were not. So we met, since we basically, the township had two consultants who felt differently about something, and we brought the solicitor in to give us that final direction, and he concurred that they were in compliance. Villanova, subsequent to that, did, on their own, install the fro, you know, a, a note that they would install the frosted glass, the guards, the fence and all that, but they were not required to do that, based on our meeting with the solicitor.
However, they would do it anyway.
That's all news, that's all news to me.
Is there any public comment? I'll go ahead and call, okay, we're gonna have to extend the meeting for another ten minutes?
Five minutes?
Well, we have public comment, too.
All right, correct, ten minutes.
Hi.
I'll make the motion to extend the meeting for ten minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes five to two.
Okay.
Okay, Tony? Okay, Tony.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I understand that you'll be waiving the fee that they will have, would have to have incurred when they went before the zoning hearing board.
Yes, yes.
So, I think the icing on the cake here would be, because I think this would be a hardship to some of the residents who are going to incur the cost to pay for a fence on their properties, which I don't think they anticipated when they bought their homes. And we can all argue that, you know, they live near Villanova University and, you know, they were going to expand, but a reminder that the CICD was created and all our zoning ordinances were kind of removed so we could create the CICD. So I think in all fairness, that we should fund this fencing for the five neighbors that are involved. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to call the vote on Phil's motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And that passes six to nothing with Commissioner Higgins out of the room.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go straight to, we're going to skip old business, new business and go straight to public comment. Any public comment? All right, I, is there, oh.
My name is Neil Slarff, I'm an attorney, represent 280 KOP, a realty company. Item zero, talking about changes to the parking requirement. I didn't hear you in the beginning say that that would not be looked into this evening. Are you postponing that to another day?
Yes, so what happens is when we hit the 11 o'clock mark, we take time-sensitive issues that we have to and we'll extend the meeting, but for those issues that are not time-sensitive, we push off to the next meeting.
So that will definitely be on the agenda for the next meeting?
It will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Nothing's definite, though.
I'm sorry?
Nothing's definite.
Oh, I understand.
But you do, you do, you can't bill for your hours today.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.